Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. First order of business tonight is approval of minutes. We do have three sets of minutes to approve. The first was from our business meeting on November 5th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I moved.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, let's prove 5-0. And then we do have two sets of executive session minutes. The first is from October 21st and the second is from November 5th. Is there a motion to approve those executive session minutes?
I moved.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Dave, was that a second?
Happened a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not at this time, ma'am chair.
Alright, thank you. Dave Catania, could you please read the warrant report you signed for us?
Absolutely. Signed warrants in amounts of $37,607.23, $1,504.59, $4,605.81, $5,291.45, $24,088.14, for a grand total of $922,513.15.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions on the warrants from the committee?
I'm sorry, is that the correct warrant? Or am I looking at the wrong one if I pull up the warrants for November 18? I have one that says a total of $270,000.
I read the wrong one. So my apologies.
Okay.
Let me find that one, hang on.
I wanted to make sure I was looking at the right one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Anne Marie for catching that.
But they're blending all together. Hang on.
It's linked in the packet too, Dave, if you have the agenda.
That would help. I'm so embarrassed. My apologies.
I'm sorry.
No, it's a big catch to Anne Marie, thank you. Don't worry, Dave.
Normally I print copies, but I'm trying to save some paper here, you know, so that's better. That's more like it. Sorry to panic everybody.
Now, Dave, it's time to read the warrant report to us this evening.
Leave that for the rolls. Here we go. Warranting amounts of $59,012.96, $10,741.48, $2,674.94, $2,216.50, $1,760.98, $5,664.54, $5,255.28, $4,557.99, $33,942.50, $15,789.60, $31,380.70, $47,059.13 for a corrected total of $270,056.79.
Thank you, Dave. Any question on those warrants?
I will never not print them again.
Thank you so much. So at this time, we do have public forum. As a reminder to the community, you can email us at npsschoolcommittee@norwood.q12 MA.us if you have any concerns under the school committee purview that you would like us to read. This evening, we do have one email for public forum, so I'm going to read that now. It came in earlier this morning from Jenny Wu, who identifies herself as a mother to a student at the Callahan. Ms. Wu writes to us, "Dear Norwood School Committee, I am so thankful to write this email in support for the recently proposed gender identity policy, which committee members swiftly voted to approve during the November 5th school committee meeting. This is such a significant step for our town to stand behind all students at Norwood Public Schools that clearly states that their identities matter. Stemming from this policy, I hope that the district can outline at some point in the future how they hope the curriculum will continue to affirm students' gender identities, whether it be through gender-inclusive readings or other enrichments. Also, I hope there would be additional clarity to address the steps that schools would take in the event of intentional or unintentional harm caused by misgendering, dead naming, or incorrect use of pronouns, which does not reflect the student's gender identity. With everything that the schools must face in the midst of the current pandemic, I am so thankful to see the step forward. Thank you for your hard work and caring for our children. With appreciation, Jenny Wu, mother to a student at the Callahan Elementary." I'm just going to refresh this email address to see if anything else came in from public forum. I do not see anything else, so at this time at 7:00, I will declare a public forum tonight closed. Okay, that brings us along to our appearances. We do have a number of appearances this evening. First on our agenda is Mr. Riccardi to give us a joint facility update. Mr. Riccardi, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. I'm here with Chris Follin. So let me just tell you that the townwide facilities was officially kicked off July 15th this summer. It actually started the third week of June because we had a catastrophic failure of the cooling tower at the town hall. They had no air conditioning. We had some issues at the fire and police department with their HVAC system and some issues at the printing building that the town owns that's a couple of lots down from the town hall. So we actually jumped in in the middle of June. But I can tell you, and I want to just spend a little time, and then Chris is going to spend some time. I just want to go over the staffing of this organization because we really haven't added very many staffs. So I'm the director. Chris, who was the general foreman for the schools' buildings and grounds, is the assistant director. Maureen Heffernan, who was the administrative assistant for buildings and grounds, is the business manager for the townwide facilities. We then added a replacement for Chris, who was obviously the general foreman and electrician. In the electrician role, we were lucky to be able to hire Paul Campbell, who is not only an electrician, but he handles all security, fire alarms, and video surveillance. So he's an important factor going forward with our, in our organization. We were also lucky enough to hire Stevie Eckhart. He worked for Jacobs Plumbing and for, I don't know, 40 years. And he primarily was in all the town buildings, including the schools. So he came over in July and he brought with him the knowledge of the town buildings, an intimate knowledge of the town side, which Chris and myself did not have. So he's a great asset. We were also fortunate enough, and those are actually the only two positions that were kind of added, but Jacobs Plumbing, we had money for a contract from them. That money just moves over to fund Stevie. And Paul Campbell was a replacement position. So Chris was a new position. We also were fortunate enough to negotiate with Tony Mazuko and Mark Ryan that the DPW took over total care and prep of the athletic fields. So in the spring and in the fall, very busy times, the DPW would do the first go around and get the fields ready, then our guys would go in and do the final broom and the lining of the fields. So took up a lot of time in the fall and in the spring. Given that the town was gracious enough to take that over, we could, with our existing people, do a little reorganization. So we took our three grounds people and made them unlicensed craftsmen. And they are supporting the licensed craftsmen and the electrician, plumber, carpenter, and locksmith. So without that, I think we would have been down some hours of labor that would drastically need it to pick up the whole, the size of the town. We actually doubled our square footage in buildings that were taken care of. We're up over a million four square feet. And the town has about 11 buildings. So, I mean, and it's kudos. I just want to take the time to name these guys. Obviously, Paul Campbell, electrician. Stevie Eckhart is the plumber. Fernando Els and Jimmy Morrison are the carpenters slash locksmith. They're both locksmiths. And we've got Richie Basomian, Larry Fry, and Bob Bejjan, who are the unlicensed craftsmen who support the licensed guys, as I said before, and do everything and anything. And Chris is going to get into more of what's transpired since we took over, but I'm going to just steal a little of his thunder because he always says in all of the meetings that he would put this team of tradesmen up against any team, both public or private. And if you walk through, obviously, our schools and we're starting to make an impact on the town buildings, they're in incredibly good shape. And it's a tribute to these guys. And this was done, there could have been a lot of issues as you take a bunch of guys who had a job doing X and now you're asking them to do X and Y. And, you know, you're not really, the rewards weren't all that high financially, but they stepped up and they've done it. And it's still what I would consider a very happy group of people doing this work. You also need to know that besides our regular work, the town was designated Green Community. And the town got a $180,000 grant to do a lot of work in all town buildings. And the committee basically chose low-hanging fruit, LED lighting. And we were able to change 340 corridor lights at the high school this summer to LEDs. We bought them four years ago through Mass Save. We got an unbelievable price, but we never had the manpower and all the time to do it. So that was done this year. They're now in public safety. And we've done the library. And I just want to reiterate that nobody, as far as I'm concerned, has missed a beat. Not one school building has missed a beat. We are, we are doing our work orders in 24 hours on average. And the town is seeing a tremendous increase in the service that they're getting, which they never had before. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Follin. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So that's a tough act to follow, Mr. Riccardi. Like Paul said, yeah, we are a good group and everybody is happy as long as everything gets done the way I want it done. No, I'm kidding. I'd be lying to if I didn't tell you that the real driver of our train here in the facilities department is Maureen Heffernan, without question. Maureen is the glue that holds this whole thing together for us, so that's the facts. Before, I'm just going to go through a list that I put together of some of the bullet things, bullet points for what the guys have done through the spring and summer for COVID and into the fall, changes in the schools that were necessary. But on top of the maintenance guys that Paul just mentioned, it would be unfair, really, to say the least, that we didn't mention the custodians in every building. And not only the school buildings, but over the past few months, meeting some of the custodians in the town buildings. It's really a good group of guys. And it's amazing how all our guys have kind of got together and blended together. And everybody's working together as one, and it's really working great. So those guys haven't skipped a beat. It's very hard for a custodian to work from home, as you all know. So they've been there in those schools, cleaning, painting all summer long, I mean, stripping floors and painting. We spent probably half a million dollars from paint, it seems. There's some we ran home depot on a few times, and the buildings show it. So kudos to those guys. And also, the cafeteria workers, those women. Man, we were down there helping those guys out whenever we could. And of course, we got rewarded for that. We won't get into that too much. And reflect the nice things that the cafeteria ladies made us for breakfast and lunch sometimes. But anyways. So with that, I'll go into some of the things that we did. Right at the outset, we replaced all the water babbles. We shut off every water babbler in every school. And we replaced them in tiny areas that the principals picked with water bottle fillers. We did that in all the schools right at the outset, for obvious reasons. We took all the momentary faucets that were primarily in the elementary schools. We just pushed the faucet on and stayed on for a couple of seconds, went off. And we put in the faucets that you could turn on, leave on, so we could get the warm water for the kids to wash their hands and stuff. All the intercom systems were tested and repaired, which we had to do anyways, absent COVID, but we were able to get that all done. We repaired windows in all the schools and classrooms where it was needed, obviously for the ventilation stuff. We did PM work on every exhaust fan that we have, every school, every roof. Some of them needed belts, some of them needed motors. We get all that stuff done and working. All the filters and all the unit vents and classrooms and everything were replaced. Three of the schools, we put new hot water tanks in. We're getting up there in age. And the one at the Coakley failed completely. And that is, I don't even know how to describe how big that is. I think it was, it takes up the garage. It stands up in the garage. So we were able to do a little bit different replacement for that with a high-efficiency one, so that was good. In the Callahan School, we relocated the library and sped office, which doesn't seem like much, but there was 3,000 books, if there was one. And it went from what was the old trailer down into the basement part in front of the school, and the teachers that were down, they moved up. So that was quite a move. And then we installed office petitions to make three offices in that area for the teachers. Several of the schools had smart boards that had to be moved, obviously, for the remote learning stuff. A lot of the teachers moved classrooms, desks, cabinets, all that stuff. We put signs up in all the schools where we needed for proper handwashing techniques, signs for social distancing, arrows on the floors in all the schools. PPE was delivered here, there, and everywhere, over and over and over again. I know some of you saw Dr. Thompson, especially what Paul's office was like. We should have probably had an armed guard outside that office for the amount of PPE that was in there and the value of it. So that stuff was all done. We helped Jill Driscoll and her team get all that, the nurses' stuff, all sorted out and delivered to the schools before everything opened up. We did, in some of, if not all of them, Paul can correct me if I'm wrong. We had to create isolation areas in the schools for if there was a possible child, a student that came down with the COVID. Hundreds and hundreds of desks had to be moved. I think in the high school alone, they had to take the desks out of the classrooms to get down to the amount of kids, and they moved them up to the walking track. So I can't even tell you how many desks at the high school that moved over the summer, but there was hundreds and hundreds of them. So that's basically what we did in the school buildings. There are some other things, obviously, that were day-to-day maintenance, routine things that we had to do, but the long of it is that. The guys were very busy, the custodians were very busy, and all in all, things are going great. So like I said, like Paul said, I don't think that we've skipped a beat with the service in all the buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Follin. Thank you, Mr. Riccardi. I know we have consistently been proud and impressed of our facilities department, and we continue to be. I think I speak for everybody when I say that. But that list of responsibilities that you just read is long. It required, I know, a lot of collaboration with other departments, so I really appreciate everything that you all do. Are there other questions or comments from the committee? Maya?
Thank you. I'm thrilled that the Joint Facilities Department is off to such a good start. Before this meeting, I was reviewing the MOU that we had signed with the Board of Selectmen to set up this joint facilities group. And I think that one of the things we said was that we would revisit this annually. So I think we're due to sit down again with with the Board of Selectmen and, of course, with Paul Riccardi and other people and just make sure that we're all on the same page for how we're moving forward with this next phase. As I know the school committee knows, but maybe not everybody knows that this year, we didn't really move any budget money around, but that, starting in FY '22, which we are really going to be starting to build that budget. Start, I mean, that budget process starts next month. We will be moving the facilities money out of the school budget and into a new facilities budget. So I think there's a little bit of work to be done there, but I'm very optimistic that that's going to go well. And I'm thrilled that this is moving along.
Maya, would you consider the need for that meeting to be something facilitated through the BBC or?
Well, we did have that joint facilities, like, working group.
Yeah.
So I don't, maybe we should, should go through that. Yeah.
Okay.
We could, yeah. I don't, I don't know exactly how we want to handle that. We didn't, we didn't work that detail out in the, in the MOU itself. But, but I do know that we had said we wanted to make sure that we talked again, just to make sure that we all were, you know, we expected that there might be something that came up this year that we realized, oh, we should have put that in writing. And so I think it's time for us to start scheduling a meeting to talk about that. It's not something that's, like, you know, urgent, all needs to be wrapped up next month, but, but just something for us to start thinking about.
Absolutely. Other questions or comments for Paul and Chris?
Just many thanks. What a heck of a job you guys are doing. Really appreciate it. And that's an understatement.
Thank you. The one thing I forgot to tell you is the facilities department will be moving down to 206 Central Street, the old light department on the second floor. And I think it's really timely because Dave is starting to get chased around the savage center for people who, departments that need more space. So we're moving out so we can watch Dave make the impossible decision who's going to get our two offices. So we hope to be out, we first said before Thanksgiving, we're saying maybe before Christmas, but probably by the first of the year.
Okay.
We're going to go with lottery.
Yeah.
It's going to be a big lottery.
Yeah. Uh-oh. Laurie just popped up. I just have a question. Maybe I could ask, I'm going to be promising and hoping that we stay in school through the winter. And we have winter sports, Maya, if I hope to see it at the rink. But a question on snow. As we all know, snow and storms are going to be coming. With the Chromebooks and remote learning, and one of my duties is running the snowstorms and talking to Dr. Thompson and in godly hours in the morning about the school or no school. So at some points during those nights, early mornings, we really feel the rush, the push to get, as do the DPW guys and the contractors that work for us, to get those final walkways done, parking lots done, roadways done. And if there's going to be more of a thought going into the remote during snowstorm time, it would be very helpful across the board. So I'm not sure there's been discussion yet, but.
Yeah, we, we do have the ability and we are planning that if the weather is bad, where we would not want people transferring, we can go all remote. The one caveat the Department of Education has given us is that everyone must still have power and internet access. So unless that changes. And of course, we have the world's greatest power and light and internet company, so I don't foresee that being a huge issue. So we're, we're planning on very little, if not zero, snow days. They would be remote-only days, so.
So one other thing, can I jump the gun and congratulate Teresa, Dave, and Alan Slater on their work with the MSBA and the outcome of AI3? Going to do the feasibility study and design our new Coakley Middle School. So it's a great team that you guys have put together, so congratulations.
Thank you, Paul, but you know, you are a part of that team. You know, you're going to be joining us in many meetings.
You're probably angle for that.
Yeah, and we will talk about the middle school in more detail later on tonight, but thank you, Paul.
Good.
All right, anything on facilities from anybody? All right, well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, guys. Happy Thanksgiving. Merry Christmas. See you at the rink, Maya. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Bye. All right, so moving along to our next appearance, we do have Ms. Reese and Ms. Bishop to join us again. At this point, I think you ladies are just honorary school committee members. So thank you for taking time to be with us. I know we have some important updates to discuss since, what was it, 12 hours after we last met, the state changed the metrics on us, Sigal?
Yep.
Yeah.
Another big change today, but it doesn't really affect any of these policies. But yep, things are constantly changing, but we're rolling with it.
Yeah.
Appreciate you guys having us again.
No, we're happy to have both of you with us. And I'll turn it over to you, Sigal and Kathy, to provide the update and guide us through the discussion tonight.
Sure, we've sort of fell into a pattern here, so I'll start again, just sharing the data. So we can go over that real quick. And then I have, I also shared a Word document, I hope you have it there packets there, which outlines a lot of what, you know, I hope we could discuss today. But first, I'll just do a quick roll through the data.
And they do have the document, Sigal. So they have that.
So like Teresa said, the metrics were changed. This is the new color coding metric system. They divided it up by population size. I actually think that this is moving in a good direction. It was just the way it was presented that was presented a difficulty for us because we had no heads up that it was coming. So we obviously fall into the population size between 10,000 to 50,000, so we are in that middle column. So in addition to the average case count per 100,000, they also take into account the percent positive. So like I said, taking in multiple metrics to really characterize what's going on the ground is a good thing. So I think this is actually advantageous for everybody to better describe the situation. So the report that, this is what I assume the report will have that comes out tomorrow night. It might be different by one or two cases, depending on the timing of when the state pulls the numbers to when I pull the numbers. But it will be within this range. So from the first to the 14th, we had 95 cases, which gives us a rate of about 22.5 per 100,000. The percent positive has been climbing, and it was, last week it was 2.92, and this week it should be around 3.23. So that is going up, unfortunately. And what that really means is that our testing capacity is not keeping up with the increase in cases. So you can have an increase in cases, but obviously you want your testing to increase too, so that your percent positive stays low. Three is still, you know, still low, and they've sort of drawn the threshold at five. So if we have, you know, our case count keep rising and our percent positivity keeps rising, we will, we will reach that red category. But I think we're still a ways away from that. Again, similar to last time when we talked about it, no large clusters, mostly household clusters, mix of different exposures. No one thing I can really tell you to not do or do differently. It's workplace, social exposures. We have some travel cases that return positive after travel. We do, what is different, this week we do have one cluster in one long-term care facility. And I think that reflects a little in our age spread there, that you see the age range from 4 to 96. We're, we are starting to see casers in older adults, which we haven't seen in a while. And obviously, that's unfortunate because that's where we do see more severe disease. The average is still pretty low at 47, and this is for that two-week period. So focusing on the data with the students, over the two-week period, we had 12 students. Only three of those are currently active. The rest have all finished their isolation, which I think is important when we talk about how we report these later, to sort of describe the difference between number of cases and number of active cases. We continue to see no school transmission. One of those cases had close contacts in the school. And that, that case is still in isolation and those contacts are still in quarantine. So we don't know if they'll convert yet. And a lot of this, some of our cases were travel. Some of those cases were actually in the remote learning, so obviously no exposure in the school. And that, I think we only had, we had so few close contacts, again, we talked about because of the hybrid model. Because most of the kids only being in school two days a week, the chances of them being in school during their infectious period are low. So that's, you know, what's been working with the hybrid to keep those close contact numbers down. And all the cases, those 12 cases, were from exposures outside of the school setting from different activities. And you see the age breakdown. It's a little more spread, spread out. We really, for, I would say, the last two, three months, we're seeing 20, 30, 40, maybe 50-year-olds. That's where most of our cases are. And you can sort of hear that it's spread out a little more with those older cases now adding to the group, unfortunately. So really what we're here to talk about is maybe is two policy changes. The first one being changes to the notification system. I worry that with every email going out, people are going to start to get numb to it. get numb to it and not really listen when an important email is coming out that might affect their child's classroom, because there's so many emails going out. I think we want to be transparent. We all have that goal, um, but we also don't want to do too much notification where people just don't pay attention anymore. So what we were suggesting is, um, so when there's a case, the, uh, individual classroom or activity, the bus or the, the sports team will still get a email saying, you know, an individual near a classroom has tested positive for COVID. Dr. Thompson's typical email that he sends out. So those would still go out with every case. But the district-wide notifications, we're still wondering if we could do that on a weekly basis with, with a summary of activities. And then as a health department, we commit to updating a, um, a chart on our website. I would say daily, but as cases come in, so as we get a case, we'll update the chart. Cases, school age cases don't come in every day, but we would keep that up to date. And I sort of, um, put a template on the, the document, um, that was shared with you of what, you know, I can imagine what it looks like. Uh, go ahead. Do I have to call on you?
I'm kind of interrupting. Yeah, I send the general notification, the, uh, the classroom bus. Those sort of notifications come from the principal, uh, at the building level, just because of the communication, uh, piece and how we arrange that, just to be, just to be clear. So I would, under this plan, send out that message, uh, there would be a link to an ongoing count. Um, but that would go out kind of weekly, maybe on a Thursday, I'm thinking, but. That's.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that correction. That's, that's a good point. Um, on who they, who the information's coming from is, is important and how, how parents, our families receive that. Um, so I think we give some time for notice, you know, we, we don't want to do a switch without getting the word out there. So we were saying, if, if everybody's in agreement, we can implement it maybe on the week of the twenty-third.
Are there any questions or concerns with this change from the school committee? Everyone shaking their head no. Uh, I think it's okay if we make this change. And have had the chance to share it also with the Board of Health, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy, I don't know if you wanted.
Oh, Kathy, you're still muted.
The board's already been notified. They have the whole plan, the same as the, um, school committee got.
Okay. Perfect. So then Dr. Thompson will continue, well, maybe not, maybe there's no more cases, but if there's cases tomorrow, Friday, he will continue to notify in the way that he has been, but then starting on Monday, we will shift to this, um, weekly district-wide communication. Okay.
And then, um, the last big discussion point was really what we talked about at our last meeting was creating, um, sort of a guideline on how we would pivot um, from remote to hybrid and then back and forth. What we brainstormed about was creating a stepped process that would really help guide the decisions, but I really want to stress that um, every situation is different, every COVID case is different, every exposure is different, and that we want some flexibility in it to be able to, um, make decisions based on what's going on on the ground. Um, whether it be moves through the steps quickly or moves through the steps slowly, depending on the situation. Um, I describe it as, you know, step one is where we are now. We have school age cases, but we're not seeing transmission in the school. We have adequate staffing numbers. There's really no, no change required. We, we talk about sort of staying status quo. Step two is, um, if any of those close contacts do, um, if, if, I'm sorry, if we identify close contacts, which, you know, through these two-week reports, I would say, um, we have one to two cases where we identify close contacts, um, so it does happen. That sort of puts us in step two, I'd call it like an awareness stage. Um, we still are not seeing in-school transmission because it's just identifying close contacts. It doesn't mean they've become cases. And again, we have adequate, adequate staff, so I would say it's an awareness. I want to make sure the superintendent knows that we have those close contacts identified and that we're watching those. Step three, we have not gotten to this point yet, and that's when we would see any of those close contacts, um, convert into cases. And that's what we would call in-school transmission. Um, so let's deal with the first point, the first bullet point first. Um, so at that point, we might advise and work with the, the superintendent would make the call. But we would, um, talk about pivoting either that classroom or whoever was affected by that case and that transmission, pivot that area or classroom to, uh, to remote until we are able to fully contact trace, isolate in quarantine and ensure there's no additional cases. And then you would sort of go back to step one and two in that classroom or area. The other scenario that we envisioned happening was if you had a significant number of staff, um, you know, teachers and other staff out that you might need to pivot a classroom to, um, to fully remote. And we would follow the same sort of, once those cases are resolved and we know that there's no more transmission and everything was sort of tied up and all the quarantines were completed, we, we could transition that back, back into in-person or, or the hybrid. Um, the one thing too, if we do see school, in-school transmission, we can talk to the state and request, um, the testing in the school. And this is that PCR testing, this is the diagnostic testing that the state has offered schools, um, if there is in-school transmission. They would come in and test the whole school, so that would really help us identify any additional cases, um, and any transmission going on in that building. And then step four, which I hope we never get to, is when we're seeing a lot of close contacts, a lot of school, in-school transmission in multiple schools. You know, significant number of staff reductions, and that's when I think it, you know, come into the school committee and we'd all be having a conversation about the whole district, um, going fully remote. Hope we never have to get to step four. But I do anticipate that, um, you know, we, we will hit step three at some point. Um, it's, you know, we have this virus in our community, it's, it's transmitting between people and I would expect the same thing to happen in those schools. I think because of the hybrid model and because the schools have been doing um, such a good job with the, um, safety standards, that's why we continue to see a low number of close contacts, if any, um, with our cases. And I also wanted to stress, you know, I don't think it's an exact correlation, but I have noticed that the number of cases we have, the, uh, it's about, you know, eighteen to twenty percent of our total cases. And if you look at the population breakdown of NORAD, school-aged children are about twenty percent of our population. You know, so I don't know if that's an exact correlation, but it seems to be where I would expect about that amount of, of school-aged children to have COVID because the virus is just circulating around. So it's not like we have an extraordinary amount of school-aged children with, with COVID.
Thank you, Sigal. Um, questions, concerns around pivoting between the two models and these four steps? Anne Marie?
I did have one question, uh, actually just thinking about the, um, the notification. Paul, or procedure that we have. Has any thought been given to not sending out an email when it's strictly in the RLA or if there was, um, a case that, uh, happened when the infectious period was outside of the classroom? Because I feel like I hear most from parents saying, you know, it's kind of funny, I got this email, we panic, and then it was an RLA student who didn't come into contact with anybody in the schools anyway. So is there, I don't know if that's something we've given thought to, that is it really necessary to send an email about um, a COVID case quote in the schools if it was not a kid, a child that was ever actually in the schools? And that could be the hybrid kids too. I mean, they're out of this, the classroom for, you know, if you're on a Wednesday through Sunday, you know, five full days that you weren't even in the classroom. And I just feel like that's what I hear most from some of the parents and where some of that, you know, email notification fatigue is coming in.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we do, we do have to notify the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education of all of our students. And then they determine based on when they were in school, whether they reported or not. So, and they usually ask, were they in school for the last week? Which I'm not quite sure why that makes sense or not, but, um, so my concern is if we don't notify people or at least keep count and track of that, our numbers with the state might look vastly different. And then we get into, uh, how come you didn't tell us this? And I've actually seen it occurring in other communities that maybe don't communicate as well as we do. And there is a difference in numbers when they do communicate and they're asking that particular district why they don't, they're not telling everybody and why they're not reporting cases. So there is a lot of confusion with the reporting to the state and how that comes out. Um, and I'd rather, you know, have the state numbers be lower than ours, to be honest with you, but that's, you know.
And I suppose with, you know, doing a weekly digest type of thing, you know, it's, it won't be as fatiguing, but, yeah, just.
Right. Yeah, and I'm actually gonna come back to this, you know, in, in the superintendent's report, but hopefully people are realizing that the way we have built our system is to reduce the kind of transmission that could possibly happen. And, and that wasn't by accident, that was purposeful, that was purpose. I need more sleep. That was on purpose. So, um, you know, we, we spent a lot of time thinking about how to do this to, to limit you know, cohort changes and, and, and contact between groups and, and time away and separated so that that could not happen. Hopefully people were getting that from it, but I agree, the fatigue problem is including the superintendent's fatigue from doing at least one method every single day for the last, uh, four weeks. You know, it, it definitely is there.
And I think that point is loud and clear, just as, uh, that most of the ones that have come out, I would say a majority are not, you know, in the schools. This is somebody who had, we had to go contact trace. I think a majority of them been RLA or they were in their hybrid um, at-home portion, and I think that definitely has resonated with a lot of the parents.
Yeah.
Sigal, is it a way when you're tracking, I don't know, with like the data you already have, if this is possible, um, like with the template that you showed us, it's gonna go on the website. Could we have a fourth row that is RLA kids? Or is that not possible with the change of communication?
No, yeah, we could say, well, there's RLA and then there's also was not in school during their infectious period. Because of the hybrid schedule, or, you know, or they were traveling, or they were already in quarantine. Like, there could be a lot of reasons why they weren't in school during their infectious period. A, a couple of things. So one I just, I, I could definitely add that. We could definitely add the student was in RLA or in a case count. Create a different category that's just RLA, um, you know, elementary school, middle school, high school and RLA as a general category. I think it, it, it's a very different message when you say there's a school-aged child, but, but they were not in school during their infectious period. And maybe the, the individual notifications, and this is something we didn't really discuss, so it's brand new to everybody here. We, we, we just say, we could send out the individual notifications if the classroom was affected. Not if there was just a child in that classroom, but if the classroom was exposed, quote unquote, you know, we, there might, might not be close contacts. But if the person wasn't in that classroom during their infectious period, a notification goes out as collected in the weekly report. As opposed to, right, going out, if that child, a child in that classroom, even though they weren't in the classroom during their infectious period, right now, currently, that would still go out with what we're proposing. Right?
Yeah, so, uh, again, thinking off the top of my head here, since we didn't talk about this in that smaller working group of Sigal and Stacy and, and Dave and I, um, see pros and cons to that. I, I, I see and I hear a lot of people talking about like, what is the close contact? And, and how are you telling me that all these cases that, you know, happened with a child in the hybrid model really did not have a close contact in the school? And I trust your department a hundred percent, Sigal. I'm not doubting you at all. But I think just to help the community understand that, you know, through your contact tracing, through your interview process with the teacher, with the school nurse, like if you have identified there really is no close contact, there is no close contact. But I would just want to be mindful that we still stay transparent in our communication and that we don't change so many things at once that it now looks like, are we trying to not put that information out there? Um, and I also think there's some families who really do want to know, is there a case in my child's physical classroom? Even if it didn't happen, you know, in that forty-eight hour window and that there's not a close contact, but just some families may want to be more vigilant or take their own precautions, just knowing that somebody was physically in their classroom. But that's just how I'm.
There's two things I, I'm sorry, if I could clarify.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, one thing, whether, because they could be in school during their, um, infectious period and no close contacts be identified. I was suggesting if they were not even in school, like there was no exposure, whether they were already out in quarantine or they hadn't been in school for a week. Um, or because of the hybrid, those two days before their test, um, they weren't in school. So there would be no chance of close contacts. But if they were in school during their infectious period and no close contacts were identified, because that can happen if the safety standards are followed very closely, then I do agree, I think a notification should go out. You know, then, then I think we all agree a notification should go out. And it's, it's that gray area of they're in the classroom, but they weren't in the classroom in their infectious period, so there was no chance of exposure to anybody. We do want to give that information. Do we need to do it immediately to that specific group or to the district on a weekly report? I think, right, that's what we're debating.
Okay, okay.
Either.
Okay, I think Joan and then my of, um, Joan.
I'm, I'm gonna pass because I'll take us in a different direction, so go ahead, Maya.
Um, I, I, I think Teresa's maybe right that we should kind of make small changes. And so I'm totally in favor of doing the weekly report, but I think that, um, it's reassuring to people to get an email that says like, yes, one of your student's classmates, um, you know, has been diagnosed, but they were not in school during their infectious period or something like that. Because I think, um, you know, if you're looking district-wide, you're not necessarily gonna hear about what goes on, but I think, you know, families talk and things happen and you're gonna hear a rumor like, oh, did you hear that Suzie had it? And, and they're like, I didn't have any, any notification. I, did they actually check? Did anybody know? And like, I just think it's reassuring for families to be able to get an email that says like, we are aware, obviously it doesn't include Suzie's name, but you know, we are aware that there was a case in your student's class. We have investigated, this person was not in the room during their, you know, infectious period. And there, you know, therefore there are no school contacts and, you know, that, I think for now. Um, and maybe we get to a point where we feel like even that's too much, but I think, um, that could be like a nice transition.
And just, and, and I, I, I think I, I get your point and I think I agree. But one, one thing to add to that is we're doing community contact tracing too, so there might be, um, transmission from that student in outside activities, which we have seen close contacts identified from activities outside of the school, which, which integrates into that.
Yeah. Um, Joan, did you want to share your thoughts?
Um, again, I'm taking us in a different direction, so I just want to make sure that.
So, is everybody, so Sigal, can you just recap what you think the changes are at this point? We're all on the same page.
Sure, if we have a positive case of a school-aged child, a notification will go out to that classroom or area, but, you know, activity. Um, regardless of whether they were in school or not during their infectious period. Um, but the district-wide emails will be restricted to one email, uh, one email a week summarizing everything. And then the, uh, the health department will keep an updated chart on our website of, um, all the school-aged cases. The, the students that go to public school.
And you will update that weekly on the website?
Um, I, I can commit to updating it as cases come in. Um, it will probably be daily to every other day. Some days we get two cases, some days we get none, so I will update it as cases come in.
Okay, and Dr. Thompson, we can have a link on our school district website that takes people directly to what Sigal's creating on the health department.
Yeah, yeah. So if people want to know, you know, on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, what the case numbers are, they can go and they can see that, but they don't necessarily have to get a phone call at one or two o'clock in the afternoon.
And the other change is that we were, add RLA to that chart.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody good with that at this time? Okay, now Joan.
Okay, so I'm also good with the notifications. I wanted to talk about, um, the, the steps, step one, step two, step three, so I don't know why I felt the need to say those. But I think, um, I'd like to talk about specifically if we get to, um, the need to close a entire school. Um, and so that's not specifically laid out in there, and I'm wondering if that should be part of a school committee decision um, versus an individual classroom, which it makes sense to me that that's at the superintendent's discretion with, um, the advice of, of Sigal. So I'm wondering, I, I guess I'm, I'm musing out loud that I would like to, for us to discuss whether or not the school committee should be involved in an entire school closing as a result of, um, in-school transmissions. I don't have a problem with the criteria. I have a problem with getting involved, yeah.
So potentially adding a step, right, like having in between the classroom and the district, like a school.
A half a step, yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, that's.
Yeah, the problem with involving school committee with that is that you would need to drop whatever you are doing and have a meeting right away. Because that is, that would need to be a decision that's made pretty quickly, as opposed to a district-wide trend that we're seeing. Um, you know, I'm hoping that we don't need to do that, but I also will, will remind the committee that the superintendent closes school when there's snow coming, you know, once upon a time in a normal period of time. Um, you know, obviously I would inform the committee about that. It would be in consult with the health department and, and Sigal, but, yeah, I mean, you know, you know, that if we could be in a situation where on a Tuesday afternoon have to make that call, and if we're closing a whole school or even a classroom, we need to be able to notify families ahead of time. So it's just a, it's just a timing thing, I think. I don't want the school committee involved, but you know, it's um gonna be cumbersome and and slow to react if we have to. Go to the full body.
If if this is truly a timing issue, then I'd like for us to set some more parameters around what would constitute a school, an entire school closing. Um, I'd like for that to be a little bit more specified than what is currently listed.
Right, well, one of the.
Unless other people wanna push back and are able and willing to drop everything when Dr. Thompson calls and says, right, my school committee meeting. I'm not in that vote, so I won't advocate for that.
Yeah, most of most of those thus far, fingers crossed, have been because of staffing issues. That that we've seen across the state at this point in time. You have staffing member, you you don't have enough teachers to run the classrooms. Uh because they're quarantined or some are sick or and most of it has been their quarantine, so we. You know, have closed the school, but we have are designed to do is to pivot to remote. And hopefully we will be able to uh to do that. So when we say close the school, we're not talking and even. You know, closing the district, we're not talking about not having school. We're talking about not having in-person school because either staff or students. Are not able to leave quarantine or or isolation as the case may be. So I think maybe that.
I I say I with I think that's a little bit more complicated, given that. Um if we have a large number of students who, a a large number of staff who need to quarantine. Um what that looks like about their ability to actually do their job remotely, given childcare responsibilities, given home situations with at-risk folks. All these other things, they may need to be quarant- like, I just think it it could become more complex with that in terms of closing remote schooling, but that's a separate issue. My issue is I would still like to see um what, how many students in a three person or four, how many teachers in a three or four. Four person team would we consider closing a grade four? So these are things that I'd like to see us plan in advance. Um and if we kind of can't plan in advance, then I'm gonna renew my push to have the school committee involved um in the in those types of decisions.
Well, the, I mean, the simple answer is when you can't do it in person, when you can't. Often times what we will, what we will try to do first is we will try to pivot a remote person to come in and do in person if possible. Or swi- switch people around and we have done that already this year to continue the model uh as it is. But if we end up, but we also ended up in a situation where we did not have um teachers because they were told to stay home. In a classroom, people in a classroom because they were being tested and they had to stay home, so that pivoted to remote for a short period of time. Until after the testing, so that's the kind of situation. When you get to a point where you can't physically staff the in-person and I'll I'll remind everybody that. We we have not been able to find subs to fill in. We have used subs in some situations. You know, but not in others. We've had to pivot even to think asynchronous instruction, but.
So that's that is in to some extent kind of proving my, is it's kind of reinforcing my point that I think we should tabletop out what that looks like. For an entire school. What does that look like at the elementary school? Where do we hit that critical tipping mass? This is more about being prepared for that and not having it be a last minute kind of decision and more have it be. Um, you know, we know that if we lose X number of homeroom teachers, right, like it's just not able. We're just not sustainable, given that we cannot get any subs, right? Like I do think that there's some table topping of this that can go. Out and that can be planned for and that can be presented to the school committee so that the community can get a sense. Of when these types of things might happen, when we might have to pivot entirely remote for a school. And that's gonna look very different for an elementary school and a high school, right? So I think planning for, I think taking some time to to plan for those things now, I'd really like to see that happening.
So I'm gonna pick it up, but I'm also gonna ask Segal some questions of things that we've kinda. Already back and forth on um and it's and it's hard in this situation to be able to like exactly set out those scenarios. We've tried in our smaller working group. So we go from step two to step three as soon as there's one in-school transmission case. So if it is identified through the contact tracing that a student. Is positive due to an exposure that they had in school, we're now moving from step two to step three. And at that point, the way it's, you know, set up right now, Dr. Thompson and and Segal are are definitely talking. I don't have to be involved, but so far I have been involved, so I'll put that on the table too. If everybody wants to say that I continue to be in those conversations as chair, I I can do that, because I've already been doing it. So if we move from step two to step three because there's been transmission in the schools. Um, part of what, you know, Segal's proposing here is that we can bring in that state testing. And I think if we bring in the state testing. And Segal, correct me if I'm not thinking of this accurately, um that's gonna really help us then Joan determine the things that you're saying, because if you test the whole school. And there's no other cases, I'm imagining we don't need to go remote. But if you do that statewide PCR testing in the school and now there's more COVID cases, that's a very different situation. About this correctly, Segal?
Yeah, the the I just wanna add, um if we have that scenario where one of our close contacts convert or we have some evidence of transmission in the school. A lot of us are talking, school nurses are definitely involved, school nurse leader. The other thing is it, we have to have a conversation with the state Epi, it's not an automatic, so um they're gonna want a lot of, know a lot of more details. Um, we're gonna be advocating to get that testing in, because that's a huge benefit we could get from the state to have everybody get PCR tested. I don't know if they're gonna say, no, we'll only do the classroom or we'll do the whole school. Um, so there's a little unknown there with the testing, but what you described was. Was overall that what would happen.
With regard to the testing, please forgive me, you have heard this as a broken record, I don't exactly trust that the state has the funds. To do that in a crunch period. I just can't imagine that in January, if we start having school to school transmission, that we're gonna be the only community in the state. Having school to school transmission, everybody is gonna be demanding PCR testing from the state at that point in time. So it might come a week or two later, which will be helpful still if it comes a week or two later. But it's not gonna give us the type of data that we need to make a decision to to close a school.
I I hear that for sure and uh. The they have had a pretty good model, though, with the long-term care facilities, um where it's actually a contract with Fallon Ambulance that they come out and they just test everybody, staff. Residents, um everybody gets tested. So we've seen it work at the long-term care, even at the, you know, in the spring when they ramped it up. Um but but I think that is a a big asterisk to put, because when this does happen, it'll probably be happening in many places and this is state of the capacity to meet that need. And that's a valid concern.
You know, and it's and if I can go back to table topping, we have discussed. How we would handle staff being out back in August, so we have a plan for how we would go through that. It's not any different than it was, you know, I mean, we might see more and the the period of time they might be out is longer. But that's what principals have done for years when there are shortages of subs. Reassigning people and doing things along that line when it gets to a point we can't do that. You know, uh i- it's not, you know, I mean. The the there probably are scenarios, even if we sat at a tabletop, we haven't thought of, which is kind of our constant theme in in this situation. But you know, the the priority is to pivot people so that we can continue with in-person instruction. And as long as we can do that safely and keep doing that, then we're not gonna be closing classrooms or or schools or what have you. And I'm hoping that, you know, with our procedures that we have in place and our and our separate cohorts or whatever, we can minimize the chance. Get there, but um you know, it is, it is a situation where administrators have got, administrators know the staffing in their building. And are going to be able to have a conversation about how they're going to ma- meet the staffing requirements. And for fear of of sounding dismissing, I'm not quite sure. How 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 the school committee would would add to a staffing decision in in a building. Uh and whether we needed to pivot to full remote or not, so.
Dave, I'm not asking for school committee. I asked initially for school committee to be involved in the closing of the schools and then I pivoted pretty quickly to say. We would like to know what some of those kind of policies are. And while I agree with you one hundred percent that the principals should be in charge of that staffing. And Lord knows, everybody knows, I want those kids in school for as much as possible. However, we do slide, right? We do slide into a conversation around what can we. How how much can be achieved educationally? Can we achieve our educational goals? And there is a tension there um between achieving educational goals and and keeping kids in school and and. I I am not comfortable that there is not, and again, it doesn't have to be firm and hard, but there should be a range available. I feel like this is the same thing as discipline. There is a range that is left that that kind of so that we don't have one school saying, oh, we've got two teachers out, close it down. And another school saying, oh, no, no, we can, we can maneuver some things in. Um, I think there's a range, there should, there should be a range that there's some consistency across the district, district. And parents know what to expect and it's, there's still a ton of discretion in there for the, for the um. Principals, but I'm talking about a floor. I mean, I don't think there's a ceiling. The ceiling is, you know, somehow we keep them in school all full time. But that there's a kind of base level of, okay, like, we can start talking, like, you can start expecting that there might be a school closing if these types of things happen.
Well, I think there's two different paths here that we would be in step three. The one path is the staffing. But from a health and safety perspective, there's not additional risk in the school. And that, I think, a staffing issue is out of the purview of the school committee and does fall under Dr. Thompson in consultation with Segal. You know, she would be notified if we suddenly have a lot of staff in quarantine um or or out because they're sick. But if it's a staffing issue that is leading to the question of can we keep the school in hybrid or pivot full remote? Kind of seeing that more as like Dr. Thompson with the principals in consultation with Segal. But if it is the health and safety, now we have that in-school transmission, so the risk of contracting COVID is different than it was. Still consultation between Segal and and Dave, absolutely, but then that gets us into what are we doing, how are we responding? And also back to like the DUSI guidance. So I just pulled up again like the, what I think is the most recent DUSI guidance from November sixth. I don't think there has been any since then, but I could be wrong. Um, and like most of their guidance is vague, but what that guidance on November sixth says is that, you know, if we are gray, green. Or yellow, which are currently yellow, they are wanting districts to be fully in-person if feasible. Obviously, that if feasible is very important for Norwood because it's not feasible for all the reasons we've identified before. Um, but they only want districts to consider hybrid if you're red. The current DUSI guidance is pushing against remote in almost any situation. Where before we, as we talked about last time, those three weeks of red is when they wanted you to like talk about possibly going to remote, they removed that language. Now they're saying even if you're red. They want you to consider hybrid if needed and um. Sorry, I just lost the one sentence that I wanted to read to you. So a fully remote instructional model should be implemented only as a last resort in classrooms, schools or districts. When there is suspected in-school transmission or significant municipal outbreak in accordance with DUSI's guidance. And then they linked to their guidance from the summer. Um, classrooms and schools should reopen after appropriate mitigation strategies have been implemented. And as determined in consultation with their local board of health. So I think these are, again, vague, these are things we're trying to put in place and I think. As Segal was saying earlier, so much is gonna depend on what happens at that time.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna talk to Thompson, because I was gonna throw a little wrench in there about that last statement that you said about community outbreak. And I think, but you go first, Dr. Thompson.
Okay, so a- and just to be clear, we we've had to pivot twice to remote in a classroom. Both of those decisions were run by me before they were made. So principals are not, they're they're coming to me with the with the situation. We're discussing it, we're discussing it with the nurses, we're discussing it if we need to with the board of health uh to make that decision. So it's not, so they're, because of how it is set up. So I guess the consistency comes down to me, but you know, that's, you know, and it comes down to what is in the best interest of trying to continue our education. Get back to in-person as soon as possible, as soon as it's safely able to do or when we can get our staff back in to do that instruction, but. We had staff that were being tested and they were told to stay home until they had the results of the test, so that was one instance. In that particular classroom, there was not going to be a sub for that classroom, so and it was all the staff that were in there. So the consistent piece for making that decision is the the superintendent lucky, so.
Just to throw another wrench in there, um that last statement about significant community outbreak, I think um we've seen some other districts around here. Pivot a school to fully remote because of um, you know, social gathering where they saw a significant number of school age kids. That were uh tested positive and a lot of close contacts. Um, and then where they're worried about the impact of that on the school, so almost that's a, that's another or that we might need to put into step three. If there's some activity outside of school that impacts the school, that puts the school at risk. Um, and now is it gonna have to be reactionary? I mean, we're gonna be reacting to whatever that scenario is, the party that happened where we knew twenty kids were at. Um and they were all exposed. You know, and were they in school the day before, you know, we found out or something like that.
Uh huh, that's a good point.
I do believe those decisions were made by the school committee, right?
I don't know.
Not all of them, no.
I I think it, I think it varies. Some of the districts, it was just the superintendent, some was the school committee. Um, again, other towns aren't working as closely school and health as we are, so I think that um most of what I've been reading about in the news. Has not been a collaborative decision. It's been, I I think largely the superintendent.
Right, so the original one i- i- in Dedham was a joint decision. Uh, there were several others this past couple of weeks that were not.
I believe Westwood was too. Okay, so do we need to make a motion on this or I feel like I'm monopolizing our time and I do not wanna do that. I've made my point. My point is probably very clear. Do we need to make a, should I make a motion that can then be voted upon or do we just wanna move on? How how should we move forward?
Well, I think we want, you know, the school committee and the board of health to feel comfortable with any changes. I mean, these are changes from what we have talked about before. That is evolving because DUSI guidance is changing and state guidance is changing, um so we're just trying to be. As clear and transparent as we can with guidance that is not clear or transparent from the state.
Can I make a suggestion? That when we, if um you're talking about a school, a whole school transitioning. Um, that we bring in the chairs, the chair of the board of health and the chair of the school committee have to sit in on that meeting. You know, that we pull it, we we pull the two chairs in with the meeting with the superintendent and myself. And there'll probably be other people to honestly at that meeting.
So the classroom decisions stay the consultation between you and and Dr. Thompson. Um, but if it elevates to a school, making sure that Ms. Bishop and I as chairs are involved. And then if it goes full district, that's when it comes down to the two boards meeting jointly. Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, but I feel like it's not really my role to perform, it's a suggestion.
Joan, do you like that suggestion or do you feel that like that suggestion?
Um, yeah, I mean, my concern is that, you know, I I like to try to be as proactive as possible, so. It's not a distrust of Dr. Thompson, so having Teresa in the room doesn't solve my concern around. Trying to be as proactive as possible. That's really what I'm pushing for. That was the whole reason to have. The school committee be involved at all, so I mean, I don't oppose that suggestion, but it doesn't necessarily address the fact that I just. I don't think I have the purview to make the motion that I would like to make. So um, which is operational, which is that I wanna see some, you know, some um. Proactive like table topping out of what it has to be, um of what it would look like for a school closing, so. Um, I mean, I'm fine, but I'm fine with that. Suggest, I'm fine with that motion, so I guess I will, I make Segal's motion. Um, that if we get to the point of closing um schools that the chairs of both boards. Um, are involved in that decision and I would like to make an amendment to that motion, it's my motion, so. And um that the chairs continue to work together to be as proactive as possible in modeling what would cause a school closure. In consultation with. Dr. Thompson and Segal. Do you want me to try to clean that up, clean that up? Or are we good to vote on that?
Clean it up a little bit, just so I, Donna, I can get it in the minutes.
Okay, Donna, I'd like to make a motion. Here is the motion I would like to make. I would like to make a motion that um in advance of a school closing. That Dr. Thompson, the chair of the school committee, the chair of the board of health and um the director of public health. Work together as proactively as possible to develop a set of guidelines for publication as soon as possible. Can I make that motion?
Yeah. Is there a second on Joan's motion?
I will happily second that.
Okay, further discussion on that motion. Okay, all in favor? Okay, Segal, would you update that document for us? Segal, would you update that document for us to reflect?
Yes.
Thank you. Maia?
So, um, a couple of questions, not about what we just discussed, but about, um, about COVID in schools. So one is, um, I know that that, um, graphic that, uh, talks about the state criteria that you had shared, Segal, I know that's on the town website. Um, is our information about the different steps, um, that, that we were just discussing tonight, can that be posted somewhere on the, on the school website, um, so that we can share that with the community?
The, the document that we have in our packets?
Yeah, not necessarily the entire document, but the, the definitely the, like, this kind of the three different, the four different steps that we were talking about. Or, and if we, if that gets modified, yeah, um, update that.
Yeah, I have no problem with publishing that. Segal, are you concerned with that?
No, I was gonna say, just like we did with those scenarios and the other documents that we've sort of developed here and brainstormed and come up with. Yeah.
Yeah. And then the other thing I had a question about is, I, I, um, Dr. Thompson alluded to this, like, the questions about the DUSI data. Um, if you go to the DUSI website and you look up data, it doesn't match what Dr. Thompson's been telling us. Um, because Dr. Thompson's been telling us about more cases than show up, um, at DUSI. And, um, Segal, I wasn't sure if you know anything about, like, what the criteria are for how DUSI decides what to report. I know that this is not your department, but I was just curious. How this is all working?
I don't know anything about DUSI. It's a mystery to me.
Yeah.
They're, 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 yeah. So, yeah, so I, I, I'm not sure I can answer it fully, but I will tell you what. So there's a case comes across, I am required to call for every single case to report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They ask me what grade the student was in, they ask me what school they're in, what district they're in. Then they ask whether the school, the, uh, student was in school within the last week. I'm, that does not necessarily mean that they were infectious, depending on a whole bunch of other stuff, but that's what they're kind of reporting. So I guess if they're with, if they're within a week, then, um, they reported in those numbers. If they don't, then they don't report. And they keep the numbers, but they don't report them as school cases. Um, so, so they're, they're, they're reporting cases in schools. Nothing about transmission in schools, nothing about whether they were infectious in schools, nothing about whether there were close contacts, nothing about whether they need to isolate or quarantine or any of that, just whether they were, you know, a positive case in school within the last week. So it's a totally different metric than everything else the rest of the state and the world is, is reporting or dealing with. So, you know, and we have been extremely transparent with all of our cases. We will continue to be so. Um, we have been very clear with, you know, with, if there are or are not close contacts, we've, we've been very clear and worked, the health department, our school nurses and the, and the nurses in the health department have worked closely together, contact tracing, interviewing all of these people in actually rapid form because of the close collaboration that we have to get those answers pretty quick. Right now, what is holding us up is that we're getting calls from parents before, because the numbers are coming through the state system to the health department, which then is causing a, you know, which way do we go sort of scenario. So there's stuff that, you know, months ago, we said, well, we'll, we'll get it in the system and we'll contact, trace it together and we'll identify. Well, now we're getting the information because parents, thank you, parents, are being very proactive about calling us when they get the results, but that can take, I don't know, Segal, sometimes, sometimes it shows up the next day uh, in, in the health department system because of the, it depends on when the test site puts it in, and then it's gotta go through and find where it's supposed to be. We've had cases that we've come and the, and the, and the, and they haven't come to the health department because the, uh, testing site had the wrong address. You know, so it's, um, it's not a perfect science. Um, and we have to be able to adapt and overcome these challenges they come through. So we, as soon as we hear, we're calling, calling the health department to, to work out a strategy to, to get on it as soon as possible. And we're very lucky uh, in that we have that relationship and have gone through those exercises back in the summer about how we would handle these things, where other districts have just been figuring out on the fly. That is not what we've done. Have we encountered new challenges? This uncharted territory? You've got that. But, um, but because of the relationships that we have, we work through them pretty quickly.
And we did, in that key scenario document that we have on the website, we did think through already if the schools learned before the health department. So both of those were things that we thought about. And, um, you know, Segal did training with every staff, with like every school staff. Um, around all of this as well.
Right.
And, and just along those, there's, there's the school decisions, and then there's our, our legal obligations and orders. I mean, we issue an order to quarantine, um, where we have to have, you know, the clear evidence, but there's also the school decision, which can sometimes be different. And as long as, you know, we're always working together and communicating. Um, you can kind of, and we say this to businesses too, you can go above and beyond. This is what we do. Our legal requirement in how we control the disease and orders for isolation, quarantine. If you want to do more, you can do that, but understand that that's not our order.
Right, right. And, you know, and I predict that I'm going to know someone's positive. You know, and perhaps depending on the population, the age of the kids, there's a higher chance of close contact, contact. But we might not be able to investigate it fully before the next day of school. So we might pivot that classroom to, to, to remote while we're investigating just to be excessively cautious. Um, and, you know, so, you know, I've told you that from the get-go, that, that's how I would approach it. And I'll, I'll continue to approach it that way. Um, you know, I'd rather have kids remote for a day while we finish an investigation in case we have close contacts than not. Um, that's not a big pivot. And we built the system to be able to do that on a dime for a reason. Safety first. So.
Any other questions or concerns at this time for Segal or Kathy? All right. So I'm not even gonna ask, when do you think we should meet again? Because inevitably something's gonna pop up and we will see you. So we will just continue to communicate and go from there.
Wha- wha- what are you guys doing, um, a, um, a, a week from Thursday? You got any plans?
We are all eating dinner with in our household.
Yes, good answer.
I'm gonna get a special mask with Velcro so I can get my turkey in.
All right. Well, thank you, Segal. Thank you, Kathy, for, um, all your work and for joining us again this evening.
Thank you also.
Hi. Hi, we do have one more set of appearances this evening. Um, Dr. Galligan and Mr. Longley are here again to join us to give us um, an update on winter athletics, since that area has also been rapidly changing with guidance and changes. So, Hugh and John, um, thank you for joining us again.
Thank you. I guess I'll start it off. So we, um, just to kind of follow up from the fall, we did conclude the fall season um, actually just yesterday. So I wanted to kind of confirm, you know, what I had said last time, that, you know, the season went very successfully. The plan that was put in place, um, across the Tri-Valley League really was implemented, you know, well, um, overall with, you know, certainly a few hiccups, um, and a few different areas that, you know, um, we could all work on and learn from. You know, it's, it's, you know, listening to the discussion, you know, previously, you know, it's a work in progress. You're learning new things daily and weekly and the, and just communicating, um, you know, with Dr. Galligan, the nurses at Norwood High School, the families. I certainly want to thank all the parents for being proactive because really it's, um, it's been them that have been in communication either with myself or the coaches or the nurse when a student hasn't felt well, you know, they've initiated that contact. And that's, that's been really important for us so that, uh, kids don't show up to school or practice when they've felt ill. So uh, we've been in communication with a lot of families over the course of the fall, um, in that regard. And, and, um, I think it's, it's worked out well. So I, I definitely want to thank all the families and certainly Kathy and Jen, uh, the, the NHS nurses that have really gone above and beyond and, you know, certainly on, you know, with the athletic side, um, you know, adding on to their, you know, just regular daily, you know, workings in, in the health office there. Uh, but we, you know, we got through pretty well and, and I think the kids had a good experience. It was meaningful. I know I sent an email to the coaches yesterday thanking them. And, and I hope the kids look back on it and feel like it was meaningful and positive. And that, um, and successful for them, although, you know, different from the past. So I know we wanted to do recognition, but since the season just ended, we're still formulating all of those things. We, we are planning on having a virtual fall awards night that NCM will air, uh, in December. So we're putting that together. Um, you know, that will be similar to what we've done in the past. It'll just be virtual. Coaches will give speeches, we'll give out the awards. Um, NCM's Brian Dunn, who I know is with us tonight, puts together a highlight video. So, so that will be very similar to the, to what we've done in the past. As far as the winter is concerned, um, you know, everything is still, you know, we're, we're closing in on the winter season. I think just, just to give you a brief timeline as to, you know, where all of this began and where we are right now. Um, the EEA put out their, their new guidelines for, for winter sports on, I think it was Friday, November 6th. And so, uh, they put those out and then what's happened since then is, um, at the MIAA level, each, each sport has a sport committee, uh, that, that really, uh, you, you know, meets probably four to six times a year typically. And in the last six months, they're meeting almost weekly. Uh, so those committees all met last week, uh, for winter sports and, uh, you know, reviewed the, the guidelines from EEA and came up with recommendations, uh, for the MIAA Sports Medicine Committee. So all of the, um, individual sport committees met, came up with recommendations, and they met with the MIAA Sports Medicine Committee on Monday, and also some, some yesterday as well. And then the Sports Medicine Committee, you know, there's a back and forth there. And if, if they're not happy with, you know, some of the recommendations, they ask for changes and updates. And then they, they in turn, um, approve those recommendations with maybe as is or with modifications. Then today, the, the Sports Medicine Committee, uh, takes those proposals and, and makes a recommendation to the MIAA COVID Task Force. And so that happened today. And then the COVID Task Force, um, will present the, the total winter sports recommendation to the MIAA Board of Directors this Friday uh, for approval. So we, we should know on Friday at some point, um, you know, where it will be as far as winter sports offerings and, and a potential start date. Uh, we were originally scheduled to start on the 30th, which was the, the Monday after Thanksgiving. That's, that's not gonna happen. We're probably looking at something like the, like December 10th or December 14th potentially. Um, but it could, it could be further. We don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the MIAA Board of Directors will do. So we'll have to wait for that on Friday. Once we know exactly what sports we're gonna offer on Friday and what the start date is, we'll put out our winter sports, uh, registration. And, um, I've been meeting with Dr. Galligan, um, and, you know, we'll put, the league has also been meeting the A.D.s in the league. We'll put together a proposal in a similar way that we did in the fall, um, for the TBL principals to vote on because it's the principals that ultimate oops, come to decisions on, on things of this nature. And so they will, they will vote. And then eventually we'll, we'll come back to, uh, this group, um, to let you know, you know, where we are and what's happening and what the plan is.
Thank you. Questions on any of that work in progress from the school committee? Maia?
At this point, are there, like, plans being discussed for all of the winter sports? Or have, have some of the guidelines been, made it clear that the, the sport can't run?
Yes. Uh, so thanks for asking to clarify. So, uh, the guidelines that were put out for wrestling and cheerleading will make them, that, they're, they will not be able to run this winter. Um, I also want to state that the guidelines that they put out also included football for fall two. Uh, so that football was approved, um, for the fall two season, which would start the Monday after, after February vacation. It is our hope that, you know, at some point this week, uh, the committees for wrestling and cheerleading, um, will, will come forward and hopefully make some sort of recommendation to possibly go to the spring. I think that's kind of the thought that's out there. But there will have to be some additional, uh, communication with the EEA for that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
So the, of the winter sports, and that you're still waiting to see what the guidance will be, is boys and girls basketball, ice hockey? Am I missing something?
Yeah, so right now, it's, so boys and girls basketball, boys and girls ice hockey, um, boys and girls swim and dive, boys and girls indoor track, and gymnastics. Um, so there still is a chance, um, you know, potentially like indoor track, the indoor track committee had already, uh, recommended moving to the fall two season because Reggie Lewis is, is currently unopen. It's not open right now. It hasn't opened at all. And I don't know if they have a plan to open during the winter season. So, um, there's a potential for indoor track to be moved to fall two. And also swim, based on your pool situation, um, could also be moved. So, um, those are two sports that we typically offer in the winter that, uh, we still may run, uh, depending on, there's a few different things happening there as far as location, you know, having locations available to us. Uh, but they could potentially move to fall two.
Thank you. Other questions from the committee? Dr. Galligan, was there anything that you wanted to add, Nate?
Uh, no, just a, uh, to echo what Mr. Longley said, and, and a big thank you to, to Mr. Longley, all the coaches, the players, um, a- and the families that really, um, did, did a tremendous job throughout the fall season. And I think it gives us a lot of, um, hope for, for that we can replicate that, uh, in a safe way throughout the winter season. Um, and, you know, I, I don't think it can be understated, the balance that we're trying to find or that, um, the MIAA committees are trying to find between a physically safe athletic setting and um, a healthy, um, output for our, our student athletes, right? This is something that, um, while there is risk involved from a physical health standpoint, there's risk involved from a mental health standpoint if they don't run, right? So, um, I, and, and students are definitely feeling that. Um, a lot of, uh, students feel their attachment to school in high school. Often, as much as we'd like them to feel it through academics, they often feel it through other things, um, athletics, arts. And, and that's a lot of times where they feel that kind of emotional tie-in. So this is one of those examples. Um, so I just want to thank everyone and kind of echo that. Um, I would like, I, I guess a question for Dr. Thompson and the committee is, um, what do you need from us moving forward? And kind of what is the timeline in terms of, um, what you need from Mr. Longley, myself, in terms of the process to, um, make sure that if these modifications are approved, which it looks like they will be in some form or fashion, and that over the next potentially week, we will have, um, a lot more information than we do now. And we will likely need to move relatively quickly after that to get things up and running. So, um, I guess just a question for you all in terms of what, um, what do you need from us and when?
That's a great question. Um, yeah, I mean, just thinking through like the DUSI guidance and the metrics and everything, I mean, and, and please, Dr. Galligan or Mr. Longley, correct me if I'm wrong or not up to date on things because it continues to change. Um, I don't think there's anything currently that would have to be a school committee decision unless we were talking about closing, not closing, but pivoting the whole district to remote. And I correct?
That's my understanding. That guidance hasn't changed to our understanding, um, that the school committee that the school committee, if we were to go remote as a school, then the school committee would need to vote whether we could continue to offer athletics at that time. There's no vote required in general.
So to clarify just what you said there, Dr. Galligan, and now going back to our steps that we just talked through with Segal. I guess I was thinking full district remote, but I guess if the high school is remote, even if the rest of the district, so if it's your school in particular that we have voted pivots to full remote, then we have to readdress athletics.
Correct. And that's what we've seen with other high schools that have had situations where they've had to make those tough calls.
Okay. But what does everybody else think? What do you want to see from Mr. Longley and Dr. Galligan? Yeah, Maya?
The other thing to just keep in mind is that our memorandum of understanding with Unit A does say that we, as we offer, you know, if we're setting up stipends for the, the winter season, that we would potentially go into negotiations. And so I think we would just be looking for information on, you know, what does that season look like? How, you know, what are the parameters? And how does that compare to what had been done in the past? And that would be something, the type of information that we would need in order to, to meet our contractual obligations.
Yeah, that, that's a very good point. So we would need that like in like a memo format or an email through Dr. Thompson. And then obviously that would be an executive session discussion. So it doesn't have to happen at a school committee meeting. We can schedule a separate executive session. So just get that information to us as soon as you have it.
And one, a second somewhat related question to what Maya just brought up related to financials and fees. I know in the, in the fall, we had a discussion about, or a brief discussion about what the fee structure would be. As Mr. Longley mentioned, once we get this information, we're going to need to move pretty quickly to get students registered. And with that usually comes collection of fees. Am I correct that we need to have a discussion if, if we were changing the fees? But if we were going to keep them the same as we did in the fall, it wouldn't necessarily require a separate meeting or correct me if I'm wrong.
So I believe as right now, the position of the committee has been that we have not reduced or increased those fees, that we kept them the same. So I would believe that as long as you were keeping them the same, it does not have to come back to the school committee.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody on winter athletics?
Can you say that again one more time? I just missed the very last thing that you said, Teresa. I'm sorry.
Yeah. My understanding is that, you know, as a committee so far, we have not reduced or increased the fees. We've kept the athletic fees the same. So what I had said to Dr. Galligan is that if they keep it the same, I don't think they have to come back to us. It's only if they're proposing something different. Good? Okay. So any other questions at this time? All right. Well, Mr. Longley and Dr. Galligan, thank you so much for your time this evening and for all that you continue to do for the physical and mental health of our students. Oh, John?
Sorry, I do, I have one question. So given that we were just having that conversation around closing schools and not having that be part of the school committee, I, I think, given the fact that theoretically the high school could close tomorrow and we wouldn't meet again for two weeks. And if we have winter sports going, does that mean that those sports continue to go? Or do we have to come together? Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
So again, I mean, it's one thing if we're talking about closing, closing a school, the district for multiple weeks. You know, other districts have closed for two weeks because of inappropriate parties and exposure and things along that line. That would be a different conversation. If it's a short-term staffing problem and if it has nothing to do with students or infections, then, then no. So, you know.
As it currently stands now though, we have to vote. And so what you're bringing up is exactly the type of stuff that we should work out in advance and say, yeah, you know, like, we don't need to vote. Here's kind of like the general kind of, we don't need to vote or we need to advocate that in some way. That, that's one of those examples of something that I would like to see us kind of think through in advance so that we don't have confusion about whether or not we've got kids playing basketball when we've closed the high school because we have multiple exposures all over the place. So that's, that is just an example of kind of what I, of the type of thing I'd like to see us work on in advance. To me, if it's a staffing issue, it doesn't make sense to close athletics, right? Great, wonderful. But, you know, if we've got kids who, you know, we've got multiple exposures, then yeah, maybe we are talking about it. So I just think some of this stuff can be worked out in advance. That's all.
Right. And as, you know, and, and we did have a classroom closure. What, last week? I don't even know at this point. But, you know, there, there was an email that went out to the school committee explaining why we had to do that. So that would continue, you know, anytime we have an exciting event. You know, I, I, you know, and again, my, my approach has been if someone's going to ask you about it in the grocery store, I'm going to make sure you have, you have the information so that you are able to, you know, to, to answer that. So if we have to close and if we're seeing infections, then you're, you are going to know that. If it's, if it's a staffing issue, which at, at this point, knock on wood, I do not see being a whole school, then that's a, then that's a different, different conversation. But, you know, you, you will be notified and, and, you know, told about, about those situations, you know, as they occur. And, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll continue to do that. We have, we have gone through how we would try to keep our schools in-person model happening, our hybrid model happening and what the different options are at the building level. We, we did that back in August as we were designing this, this program. And we'll continue. But if we're seeing infections and that sort of thing, if, you know, and, you know, I have to give, much like, you know, John and Hugh mentioned, I have to give, give our, our kids in Norwood a tremendous amount of props, respects and shout out. They have continued to make good decisions. They are dedicated not just to their sports and activities and such, but they're, they're, they're really showing a lot of responsibility in this community. And I would, I know it's going to get tough, but I would encourage them to keep doing that. You know, and, you know, i- i- if we don't have those kinds of issues, you know, I, I don't see us being, being in that situation. And, you know, I have, I have confidence and faith that our kids will continue to keep making good decisions. But, you know, and as the committee know, that you will, you will be informed and you will be, you know, notified of any of those situations of why we're in that situation. You know, we'll not leave you out there on a branch. So.
I was trying to let Dr. Galligan and Mr. Longley go, but now I actually have another question because of what Joan said. So I apologize. So originally, back in the fall, the MIAA said that if your school was in the red at the start of the season, you couldn't participate, correct?
I, I think with everything else with DSC and the MIAA, as, as the fall moved forward, you know, and people, you know, were experiencing, you know, athletics in schools, things changed. And I think the, by the end of the fall, we were at a point where the recommendation from DSC was that the schools were in communication with the Board of Health, you know, regards to those things to, to make sure that there wasn't any clusters in schools or things like that. And that, that, that communication between the schools and the Board of Health was really significant factor in deciding, you know, whether or not to continue with athletics or schools, you know, and so forth. So I think that's really still where we, where we are. Maybe Dr. Galligan could add to that.
Yeah, that's still my understanding. I, I believe that as with a lot of the color-coded guidance, I think that that has changed with it, right? That was that information that you just referenced, Teresa, was put out when basically they were saying, if you're red at all, you should probably consider going remote. That was even before the three-week thing came up. And, and now it's a totally different scale. So I, I don't believe that pertains at, at this time, but they haven't specifically stated what it means for winter sports, depending on your community's designation.
Yeah, I haven't seen them tie in their revised metric because with the, with our rate right now, that Segal read to us earlier, you know, 22.2, I think she said, we would definitely be red in the old metric, like we would be really red in the old metric. And now we're, we're still yellow. So I hadn't seen anything specific to athletics based on the metric anymore. So I didn't know if either one of you did.
Yeah. And that is kind of, you know, and I'm being facetious when I say wonderful part of, of this whole thing is that as part of we're going through this game, the rules, the guidance, the requirements, all of those are changing pretty much on a weekly basis. And, you know, as soon as we have a, a goalpost, someone moves it 10 more yards down, you know, down the field. You think back, you know, we had, if you're red, you should go full remote. And then it was, well, if you're red, wait two weeks. Then it was wait three weeks. And now it's red is not red. It's, it's some other color. So, you know, so these, these things keep evolving. You know, part of that is, is I would like to think based on science and, and, and what we're learning as we go forward. But I think part of it is also policy based on other factors than, than science. And, and that's where we get, you know, a little concerned, which is, you know, when it, when it becomes not fun, because then you have, you know, things said in a news conference, like where everyone should be in person where feasible. And no one really is defined feasible. I'm, I'm going to address that in my superintendent's report. But, you know, so there, there, there's this constant change and, and stirring of, and throwing out new pieces and, and changing the game a- a- as we're playing it. So we can say one thing, it's not boring. But it is, I also would say you don't always know where you stand sometimes. So.
Yeah. Okay, John.
I just wanted to add one thing, not necessarily related, but I wanted to, you know, reiterate what Dave said and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope that the, you know, community stays safe and makes good choices because that has been a big part of how we've been able to stay in school and, and play sports with the kids and the adults making good decisions. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this would have been the 92nd year we would have played denim on Thanksgiving. So that is in football. So that's pretty significant that we're not, you know, going to be able to play that, that game this year. But hopefully we can, you know, see them this spring. But, you know, I just, happy Thanksgiving. I hope everyone stays safe and healthy.
Thank you. Yeah. So I, I will let the two of you go with one request. If you do hear anything from the MIAA that ties any of these decisions to the metric, please let me know because I, I really hard to keep everything straight and it's getting harder.
And once we, once we get that, I'm, I'm, you know, I'll, I'll ask John and Hugh to, you know, give that to me and I will share that, you know, with the committee as part of the weekly update. Okay?
Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you all for having us. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay, that might go on record as the longest like time we spent on appearances. But obviously all these appearances tonight were really important and required our time and attention. Dr. Thompson, your superintendent's report, please?
Yes, we're actually going to start off with a, with a guest call. We're going to, we're going to give Dr. Wyatt. We just finished a, a professional development day and great things going on. We're going to have him just for that. And then I'll come up and come back and finish up. Dr. Wyatt?
Great. Will you present the, the few slides there, Dave? Are you going to? Thanks. All right, great.
Only if I can find it. There we go. It might not be on the right slide. There we go.
Well, that looks good. All right, awesome. Thank you. So good evening, everyone. So yeah, I'll just give you a very quick update on our, our full day of in-service work on November 3rd. And so David, if you could flip to the, the next slide there. I'll go through the three levels in terms of what they did on November 3rd. So at the elementary level, we had a speaker, I think I had mentioned this to you all earlier, Ariel Nelson. She is from the Collective Moxie. It's a consulting organization. And she spoke to all of our elementary staff. We divided them up in half, half the group in the morning, half the group in the afternoon. And the topic was working effectively with marginalized students and families through culturally responsive teaching. And this is the first part of a two-part series. And as it says down further on the slide, the second part will happen on January 4th as a, as sort of the follow-up to this first part. And the objectives there, you can see for the workshop, I, I won't read them all out loud. I'll just give you a minute to sort of look them over and hopefully the audience can see that as well. Those are the four objectives. And she didn't quite get through all of this agenda. So some of that will be picked up, you know, those latter bullets will be picked up at the beginning of the next agenda. But the feedback from staff was ranged from good to excellent. So I think the people really appreciated Ariel's expertise, knowledge and responsiveness to some of their questions. She really knows her stuff and it was, I think, a very informative workshop, which, you know, we're looking forward to the follow-up. And then as is true with, with these other two events, we'll be working with the administrative staff to figure out how can we really sustain this work beyond just this, you know, this year. So it, go ahead to the, to the middle school there, Dave. You can, yeah. So at the Coakley, Margot sort of created her own little pair deck presentation, which was very well done and effective. I sat in on, on that and in part. And what she did is she embedded an article in, in her pair deck and some webinars and videos. And she had her staff break up into groups and discuss the article, view the webinars and have conversations around what they got out of those, those tools and what impact, you know, it might have on their practice. Part of that work was, you know, going to the Harvard's Project Implicit where they could take a quick little survey to test their own biases out. And the article was written by Gwen Bass and Michael Lawrence Riddell on culturally responsive teaching and UDL. So the, the real theme or topic, as it says there, is, was trying to blend the work that the Coakley had done earlier around culturally responsive teaching. This has been sort of a long-term project of theirs with the new work that they learned on the previous in-service day around universal design for, for learning, which the, we abbreviate as UDL. So there are a lot of, you know, abbreviations in education and we're just continuing to add to them here with UDL and CRT. But you'll be hearing those, those more going forward in, into the future. So that too was sort of a three-hour morning session. And the objectives of that work was to review the work done, as I said, from last year and blend it into the new learning. And to, I, she left the staff with asking them to identify one thing that they can do in a future lesson to make it more culturally relevant. So hopefully they all walked away with one thing they were going to try with their kids and their, their curriculum to sort of move that work forward in, in a very real, concrete way. And the other part of the day was spent with mandatory reporting, a seminar that was run by the Norfolk County. And again, the feedback for both of these, you know, half-days was good to excellent from the staff. And the follow-up will happen during faculty meetings and on January 4th, when the middle school will work with the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth on creating an anti-racist classroom. This will be sort of the topic. And that will tie into all of the, the work around UDL and CDRT. So I think we're hitting this, this from a number of angles that hopefully will have a lasting impact. So let's check to the high school. At the high school, they had two trainers, Danika Manso-Brown and Phil Fogelson from the Anti-Defamation League. This too is sort of an ongoing effort at the high school and actually started back in, in, yeah, 1917 with Jonathan Bourne, if you recall, he sort of brought, started that work with the ADL. And so this World of Difference Workshop on understanding, focused on understanding the language of bias, creating brave spaces for discussion on social justice and injustice, talking about Black Lives Matter and curriculum and the perpetuation of a, of systemic racism. Again, I don't think they got to the latter part of that in, in their workshop. At least I didn't, I wasn't present for that. And that might be something that they pick up on in the subsequent training on January 4th, where they'll be doing another three-hour session with ADL. And you can quickly take a peek at the, the objectives there for. Okay, yeah, for the, do you all see that pinned tab in the middle of your screen? I think, no? Okay, uh, maybe it's just me. That's, um, understand the various, um, isms and how they affect us and others. And a deeper analysis of implicit bias and white privilege. That's something that was a little repetitive for some folks. Because as I said, we had started this work earlier, uh, in previous years. But repetitions can be a reinforcing thing and, um, not a bad thing at all, especially given the topic here. It, it takes time to really understand the, the true meaning of all of this. Um, increased understanding of racism and anti-racism and how to move towards being more anti-racist and not just not racist. Um, so pretty, pretty hardcore objectives. Uh, the work in the other half-day was, um, around Portrait of a Norwood Graduate, which they abbreviate as Pong. And they, so they worked in departments to, um. Um, identify ways that students can demonstrate each of the five Cs, which is part of that Portrait of the Graduate. Um, and that's collaboration, creativity, communication, critical thinking and citizenship. And so the department's trying to figure out, how can we get kids to demonstrate these things? And how can we sort of capture and measure progress, um, in those areas? Um, around each greater course. And, um, and then they also talked about, um, some of the work that. Around UDL and how they could incorporate that into their, into their teaching. Um, the feedback there too ranged from good to excellent. Um, so I think all in all, this was a, a really productive day. And it, it really focused on some critical topics for us as a district. Um, and, uh, I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. The faculty were very responsive. Uh, took it very seriously and, and, um, it was, it was a good day. So, um. I'll take any questions if you have any. Um, and I'll update you certainly as, as this unfolds, you know, on January fourth. We have another half-day on December eighth. Um, and there'll be some work, you know, obviously work going on during that, that half-day as well. Um, and I'll keep you updated about that. Um, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. You know, everything that you just shared with us is critically important work for our district to be doing. And I'm really proud and hopeful that, you know, we were able to get it in early in the school year and commitment that I know everybody has to it. Um, is it possible that, that short presentation goes on our website? So that more people in the community might be able to have a chance to really see what we're doing with our staff and these issues?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. In fact, I can, I can put in some links to the slides that. Were, um, presented to the faculty. So if they wanna go a little deeper and there's also, um, each presenter. Um, attached a bunch of resources for people to go deeper with, with some of the topics. So yeah, we can put that on the website.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Wyatt? All right, thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wyatt. So, uh, just to, um, follow up on a couple, I'm gonna actually close a tab. So I don't, uh, have quite so many o- open. Uh, but just a little, uh, update from our Health Services Department. Uh, we are working currently with, uh, CVS and Walgreens as well as Norwood Pharmacy. As people know. Um, there is a requirement that every student get the flu shot before the end of December. So we're looking to host, uh, flu clinics on Monday, November thirtieth, Tuesday, December first. And Thursday, December third, as well as Friday, December fourth. There'll be one clinic in each of our school buildings immediately following dismissal. Registration information, locations and times, places will be posted on the district webpage by the end of the week. Um, and flu shots will be available to people over the age of three. Family members and staff are also welcome. We're hopeful this will assist the school community in meeting the flu shot, uh, state mandate. Um, and obviously help keep all of us, uh, healthier, uh, going forward. Uh, the other thing I do want to, um, wanna mention, and it is actually, uh, posted on the school website. Uh, is the recommendations from the, uh, Department of Elementary Secondary Ed and the Department of Public Health. Uh, around, uh, holiday celebrations and for fear of sounding like a Scrooge. Um, the advice is, once again, to limit gathering size, uh, indoor gatherings, uh, according to the state. Um, it, uh, advisory, at this point, there are ten people. Outdoors are limited twenty-five. Um, and a strong recommendation that individuals should stay within their household. Um, for, uh, lower-risk celebrations, people should limit in-person holiday gatherings to only people they live with. Um, and if you needed to, it should be outside and, you know, keep it to people you regularly have contact with. And of course, to avoid travel, uh, and the Massachusetts Travel Order is, uh, still in place. Um, and you can see that guidance on our website. Um, one of the questions that I have been, uh, getting a lot in, uh, at different times is how come we don't have a lot of close contacts? I did, uh, in the schools when we have been reporting. Um, and I did comment a little bit out about that, um, earlier. But in our hybrid model, basically, the way we've set it up is that kids are in-school in-person for two days. And there's five days in between. That reduces the chance of having close contacts in the school. Um, the wearing a mask, the distancing guidelines that we are following from, uh, the CDC and the WHO of six feet. Also reduces the chance of close conduct, contacts. And that is why, uh, we did build it on the safer side. Um, to make sure that we would reduce, um, the possibilities of transmission. Um, the other thing I will comment on is the, uh, governor's, um. Press conference, uh, a few days ago, when he mentioned that, you know, we should all be going back full in-person where feasible. And I wanna revisit that here for Norwood. Once again, uh, we have small schools, uh, with small rooms. Our high school was built with the, uh, MSBA requirements, which really kind of packed the kids in. There are not extra room. Um, even if we went to the three-feet guideline, which is below what the CDC and the WHO is, is advising for distance. Between, uh, individuals, we could only get about five to maybe eight people. We would still be unable to bring everybody back in school, even at three feet. Um, my response to the governor, should he ask if he would like us to bring everybody back? He can then, uh, send us the money to rent more space, hire administrators, set up cafeterias and things along that line. Be more than happy to bring everybody back. We also need twice as many buses. But those are other things. The guidance came back, we should be putting them in three feet. There was no release of guidance on transportation. Or other factors that influence how we can bring people back. And we have not seen an increase in funding from the state or federal government to do that. Um, so feasible is, is a nice word to throw out at, at a news conference. It is irresponsible to throw that out without giving any sort of context. So that's my, um, rant for today. Um, I also wanna revi- remind families that this Friday, uh, for elementary is the last day to ask for a model change. Between remote learning, uh, and the hybrid model that we have. Uh, please make sure you get that to your principals. We are processing them on a first-come, first-served. Um, with the caveat that if we have a significant need for some reason, if someone was, um, a high-needs student before and would. They might be a preference there. But, um, we're hoping that we will have that all done. We are going to meet, uh, principals, Dr. Wyatt and myself, early next week. Uh, to do some horse trading, to see where, uh, we might need to, um, make some shifts. Either in where students go or where staff are placed in order to meet that. But that is, um, the next episode. I just wanted to remind people of that. So, uh, with that, that is the superintendent's report. And, uh, that's all I have. If there's any question, be more than happy to, uh, follow up with, uh, with any member.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any questions on any of that from the committee?
Uh, thank you for saying that. I mean, it is really simple to say, hey, three feet's new guidance, but it's not so simple. Thank you for explaining that very succinctly and to the point.
Any other feedback at this time? Okay, we'll move right along. Um, so just a couple, uh, shorter budget items. Um, Maya, would you be able to share with everybody the, um, results of Special Town Meeting last week?
Sure. Um, as you all know, uh, Special Town Meeting convened last Thursday, November twelfth. Um, there was the, um, the article before town meeting for additional funding. For, um, the schools for the hybrid and RLA models. And, um, that, it, that included the, the money for the benefits that would be required for the new staffing. Um, uh, the questions around it tended to actually be more about, um, the benefits than they were about the actual needs in the schools. But there were some questions about, um, the, uh, the, the a- added staff that we brought on. And the fact that they came in as long-term subs and, and, you know, whether or not we would be keeping these, um, positions going forward. And, um, Dr. Thompson did let everybody know that we are hoping against hope. That, um, in the fall, we are back to a more normal, um, school model. So, um, we do not expect, although we may find that we are able to keep on some of those, um. People who we have hired, you know, who maybe would apply for new positions if they, um, if, if positions open up in the district. Um, we are expecting that the long-term subs that we have hired will, were just for a one-year. But the good news is that, uh, Town Meeting approved that new funding unanimously. And so that was great news. And, um, the capital outlay, um, was also approved. And so there were some requests there that impacted the schools, such as, um, some additional technology. Um, PA systems, um, card readers and, um, things like that. So, um, all of that was approved at Town Meeting and, um, is moving forward.
Thank you, Maya. Dr. Thompson, anything that you would add from Town Meeting?
Um, no, I just wanna thank, um, you know, the t- Town Meeting members, uh, members of the Selectmen, the Fincom, Mr. Mizuko. Uh, for all of their support, uh, as we've gone through this very difficult process. Uh, way back when, we had hoped that there would be a Second Cares Act or the Heroes Act, as it was once called in the spring. And we would not be going back to, uh, Town Meeting, but unfortunately that did not happen. And we were in that position. Um, we arranged this and you folks know this, we, we tried to be as cost-effective. And lean and mean as we possibly could. I think we accomplished that. Uh, because we had the support of the town early on, uh, we did start our hiring process in August. Other districts did not do that. They are still searching for a large group of people. We are very lucky with the quality of people that we found to fill those positions. Uh, and to fill probably about ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of them. Again, I will say we are still looking for pairs. If you're sitting at home looking for something to do, uh, give us a call. Um, but, you know, we, you know, we're very lucky. And feel very fortunate to have the support of the town and, and will continue to work with them, um, and, and use that money sparingly. And, and, and judi- and judi- judiciously, um, you know, a- a- as we move forward. So, um, you know, as far as the technology piece, you know, again, support, thank you for the town. Um, the PA systems and improving those at our elementary schools was desperately needed. The card swipes are old and those are security items we would need to keep up on. Um, the technology. Um, actually even back to last spring, uh, being able to use those, those, um, new boards at the high schools made a huge difference. In our blended hybrid learning. Um, having the, uh, switches and such to run the internet to expand that. Um, you know, and, and the devices was absolutely huge to be able to start and be successful. So, again, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Dr. Thompson. All right, so next is, um, budget transfers. I know Mrs. Sheridan wasn't able to be here tonight. So, Dr. Thompson, can you guide us through the two budget transfers in our packet?
Yes, I will, I, I will try to do my best, but filling, uh, Mrs. Sheridan's shoes might prove difficult. But, uh, there are two budget transfers. The first is for twelve thousand, uh, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. This is going from, uh, a personnel line, uh, for administrative clerk salaries. Uh, into some other lines to basically cover substitutes, um, in those lines. Um, so that's, that's what that first one is. The second one, uh, is at the high school and that is fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, that was money that was set aside to do transportation to Harvard to do field trips. Those are not happening this year. It is money that, uh, we had and we are going to use it to actually, um, purchase, um, some software. Um, so it is money for the, um, Career Pathways Program. So we're basically going to, instead of driving to labs that are not open, uh, invest in software to, to move the, uh, the program forward.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any questions on those budget transfers? Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Maya. Dave, is that a second?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Aight. Joan, did you say yes?
I said yes.
Okay, five-zero. Thank you. So, moving along now to old business, although the first item under old business really should just be called ongoing business. Um, I'm gonna add a separate category to the agenda. Um, because the middle school project is going to be ongoing business on almost every agenda from now until probably twenty-twenty-five. Um, but Paula Cardy kind of ruined the, the big news, but thank you, Paula, for watching, for sharing it earlier. Um, as the committee knows, we have seen it you, um, yesterday, that Alan Slater. Who again is the Chair of the Middle School Building Committee, Dr. Thompson and I, um, participated in the interview process with the MSBA panel for the designer selection. Um, we interviewed AI Three, Dorn Whittier and, um, Milla Dyer Spears. Um, and AI Three was chosen. Um, so AI Three, um, who is the designer from the high school, who we also worked with on the long-term, um, facilities. Uh, project, um, will be part of our team in creating a new middle school. Um, Dr. Thompson, do you wanna share a little bit more about what is going to be rapidly happening now?
Yeah, so we're gonna start, uh, engaging, uh, early next week, as a matter of fact, with, uh, with AI Three. And our owners' project managers, Compass Management. Um, so we've kind of brought back together the dream team, except maybe me. I was there the first time around or the second time around. Uh, but Compass Management was the o- owner's project manager on the high school project. And AI Three was the architect on the high school project. So they have a long history, um, of working in Norwood. Um, I have to say that their plan, um, even in a, and I'll, I'll be honest. I was not really looking at, at, at a renovation as a possibility until I saw their sketches for how they envisioned. Possibly kind of taking the middle out of the, uh, current, um, school. But leaving the auditorium and, and the, and the gyms and kind of repurposing, um, those. But it was very innovative divi- design. Um, they are focused on, um, a middle school concept. With a team-based, um, building, um, that will facilitate our, our middle school model. Um, I was very impressed with, uh, their, their vision for, uh, using outside, um. Outside space, uh, their, um, energy conservation, uh, and, and energy, you know, net zero. Um, buildings and such, and, and really making them, um, you know, a, a, you know, a green pillar of the, of the community, if you will. Um, so I'm very excited to start working with them. It will be a lot of work. The first, um, piece is going to be, uh, getting a lot of community feedback. And whether this new middle school, this new Coakley Middle School should be a five through eight or a six through eight. Um, and, you know, feedback on that. And from that, we have to develop an educational plan for our facility. That really captures what the Norwood schools are trying to do. And obviously Pong, our Portrait of the Graduate is gonna be a major piece of that. And building, um, the, you know, the middle of our, of our district. Um, so that we're facilitating our projected and expected outcomes. Um, so it's going to be a lot of heavy lifting, uh, but we are definitely pleased to be, uh, doing it with, with AI Three.
Yeah, and as Dr. Thompson said, we meet, um, him and Alan and I on Monday with, um, the designer. Um, the Middle School Building Committee, under the guidance of Alan Slater, is gonna start meeting monthly. Um, the week of December first, we'll meet again, and then every month after that. And as I've shared with all of you before, um, AI Three and Compass will be at our school committee meeting on December sixteenth. And they will give us a much more robust presentation of all that is going to be done in the next three weeks. And, and the steps moving forward. Um, but any questions or comments at this time from the committee on the middle school project? Okay, don't get bored about talking about it, cause we'll be talking about it at every meeting from here on out. Uh, so moving right along to old business, um, the next item is our school committee goals. Um, in your packet, you should see a document that I, I prepared as a draft. And this is definitely open up for discussion and edits can be made. Um. for discussion and edits can be made. Um, I also, on this document, um, if you scroll down, I linked to the results of our self-evaluation that you might remember that we, as a school committee, most of us did um, in like May or June. Um, so um, Mara Smith's comments are also in here, but then um, I also wanted, uh, now that Anne Marie has been on the committee for a while, um, she did it as well. So there's six responses in that self-evaluation, if you look at it. Um, and I spent some time going through that, and I would love it a future date for us as a committee to dive into that self eval, but I was looking at what all of us um, responded to as I was formulating the goals. Um, and I thank the other committee members, you know, for your feedback on on the goals. Uh, Maya had had a great suggestion that we align our goals with the election cycle. So I did break down um, the goals in two sections, one from now through the end of March twenty twenty-one, because there will be an election in April. Um, and then the second phase of goals, um, starting April twenty twenty-one through March of twenty twenty-two. Dave, would you be able to maybe um, pull this up so everybody can have it on the screen as we talk through it? It might just be easier for anybody following us to know what we're referencing.
Yeah, I have to, I have to get it um, up as a tab first.
Okay, I'll I'll continue to talk as you pull it up, but thank you. Um, so again, this is just a draft, a place to start. Um, I know that there is a lot on this document. Um, but what I spent time doing was looking at our strategic planning process that is happening. I compared it to Dr. Thompson's goals, and I was looking at our long-term agenda. Um, and honestly, the bulk of this is already things that we're going to be doing. Um, according to the strategic plan or according to the long-term agenda, there's just a couple additional things on here that maybe we remove or or um, adjust. So um, for the first part, now through um, March, uh, we obviously have to complete union negotiations. Um, and we do have a number of unions we have to complete that with. Um, you know, as Dr. Thompson was just referring to, that middle school education plan is gonna be a lot of work. That plan does need to be um, approved by the end of March. Uh, we will see a draft of it in January, but then we do need to approve the final plan at the end of March. Um, the grade configuration for the middle school does have to be voted on by us by the end of June, June twenty twenty-one. Uh, obviously, we have to develop and pass our fiscal year twenty-two budget. Uh, we're going to begin the policy work with MASC, which I'll talk to you about next. We do have that contract ready to go. Um, number six doesn't necessarily have to be done. This is one of those that everybody could say, you're way too ambitious, why are you making us do this? Um, but it is something that Joan and I have talked about in our policy subcommittee and um, that is creating a monthly school committee newsletter, uh, just to help get communication directly to parents. Um, I put, you see my notes here, I put simple, because I really do mean simple with this idea. Um, Joan has already been, after every school committee meeting, putting an update in some Facebook groups uh, to recap our meeting. So I was envisioning just building off of that, also a way to, you know, link to all the initiatives we have, you know, going on. So that's something we can talk about. Um, the North Schools Listen initiative, uh, you know, we've already committed to that. It's in our strategic plan, but we haven't really defined what we want to do as a school committee. So number seven is possibly deciding now for the next four months what we want to focus on, but it's also mentioned again later on in the document. Um, the schools time, school start times initiative is on here for us to discuss. We do have a task force meeting tomorrow on that initiative. Um, this is the first time we're reconvening the task force since February, because the pandemic definitely paused that work. Um, number nine, the mid-cycle check-in with Dr. Thompson. We have to do it. It's on our agenda. Uh, number ten um, is around the mental health needs of our students and staff, so that's something we can talk about. Um, and number eleven is a question for everybody. Given all the pandemic-related work that we're doing, is there anything that you wanted to capture and formulate as a goal? So that is enough work for like a full year, but that is just the next few months. So let's start talking about those goals first. Feedback, other things added in, things that you want removed? Does anybody have ideas about the couple of areas where we need to, you know, kind of uh, define more? So around the North Schools Listen, is there something as a school committee that we want to commit to between now and March? And then the other question I guess I have for all of you is around number eleven, if there's anything specific to our pandemic work that you wanted to spell out? Any feedback?
I think you've kind of put us all on the spot, you know, I'd like to think about a little bit more. Um, get back to you.
Hi.
There are some things that we've, sorry, go ahead, Maya.
No, go ahead.
Uh, my comment was just, there are some things on here that seem like they are, of course, we have to do these, and so I would have no problem prioritizing those. Like, we're gonna start negotiating, uh, we're, we have to finish the negotiations, right? Like, um, the, anything related to the middle school building. Um, the mass policy audit work, we have the, we've been working towards that for such a long time. Um, and once we get that, it's, that's just more like a routine and a rhythm versus a super heavy lift for us. So I'd say that that is, I mean, it's still a lift, but it's not as heavy as some of the other things on this list. Um, so I would say that I'd like to um, prioritize that as well as number nine, um, which is the superintendent mid-cycle check-in, only because once again, that is something that we are committed to doing, um, and we've already committed to doing, so. That, that's all I've got.
Yeah, I mean, the way is that, again, I I was really looking at a variety of documents and things. Um, we have to do number one. Uh, number two, number three, we have no wiggle room. We have to adhere to the MSBA middle school project. Um, number four, we have to develop a budget. Number five, we're signing a contract. It has to be done. Number six, again, we can talk about. Um, number seven, I just think we have to flesh out more of a timeline with the North Schools Listen. Maybe there isn't something specific between now and March, and then it just falls down, you know, in the next timeline. Um, number eight, I need guidance from everybody, because again, we have a task force tomorrow, so if the committee is thinking you're not lo- no longer interested in this initiative, I I really need to know that before tomorrow's meeting. Um, number nine, we have to do. Number ten, I formulated a goal based on what's gonna be on our long-term agenda. Um, but... Maya?
So I I agree, we need to talk about the North Schools Listen, um, and I honestly have have, I know we were talking about a few different items, and I I don't know where we landed with that over the summer, and so...
Yeah, um...
Can we recap where we're at?
Yep, so there was a number of things written in Dr. Thompson's goals, some of which with Dr. Wyatt's presentation on professional development is definitely happening. So that was really great to see. Um, we had written in a timeline around a survey to go out to families, and um, I linked to Dr. Thompson's goal document further down, so it is there if people want to look at it. Um, I do think we're um, off track with what we had said, so we need to, not tonight, but soon, reevaluate some of the goal setting we did for Dr. Thompson and aligning it to what we think is feasible going forward. Um, and then we did also determine that Joan was gonna be trying to get some interns from Northeastern starting in January to help us with that project. But um, Joan, not to put you on the spot, to spot, I didn't ask you this before, but do you have any update on that?
Um, I think we'll be able to get some interns um, by January, but we haven't, have we started, what's, where are we at with the data collection?
We haven't started.
Right, so, um, you know, I could, we could also look at, you know, do we want the interns to really, instead of doing the data analysis, I can shift that job description to be, do you want to help build that survey and run it by?
Yeah, I mean, part of a discussion that unfolded on Monday in the Strategic Planning Committee, and um, Maya and Dr. Thompson and Dr. Wyatt can speak more to this too, um, was around this work and around um, equity consultant and um, because an equity consultant can potentially do that survey for you. So um, I I don't know what number seven should say. I just feel like we made a commitment to something and we don't have a clear path of what we're looking to achieve. Um, and maybe we need to cut, you know, again, we don't have to vote on all this tonight. Maybe we need to do some research. I just need more direction from everybody about what is or isn't possible.
You know, I think one thing that we had talked about when we were first starting to think about North Schools Listen was to start really simply with just having um, either a link on the website or an email address or something like that, similar to how there's a way to, you know, report bullying, that there would be um, a way to provide some feedback um, related to issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So either, so it could be, you know, people um, expressing some concerns about something that's happening in the school, or expressing concerns about curriculum, or eh, you know, just some, some sort of way to not, not a structured way to say necessarily like a survey, but we were thinking about is there something we want to, similar to how we have an email address for for public forum, do we want to put out in, you know, an email inbox that we we say like, this is where we're, we're hoping to get feedback on this? But then I know that we also had concerns about, you know, what if some of the things that we get seem to be um, complaints about bullying or complaints about actual misconduct and and how do we, how would we address that and who would be responsible for dealing with us? So I think that was kind of where we started to get a little bit hung up, but um, but I think that designing a good survey is a lot of work. Um, and and then I, obviously, the data analysis is is as well. And then we, I think when we were talking about the survey, we had kind of said, maybe it makes sense to start with something a little bit more qualitative, because we don't even know, you know, we need to start a conversation and do some like, more like brainstorming type exercises before we can really design a quality survey.
Mm-huh.
Um, and so I don't know if that's something we want to think about again, is like, how do we get that like overall community feedback? Um, provide a, you know, a place where we can collect all of that information. Um, but, but then I I think we also kind of got hung up on the the parameters around it, you know, do we want people to be able to 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 post anonymously, um, you know, but then that gets into, well, what if there's allegations of of misconduct or something like that, then how do you respond if the, if it was just an anonymous message? So, um,
Yeah.
That didn't really help anything at all. I think I'm just thinking out loud.
No, it's it's that there's so much that goes into this, this one initiative, this one very important area. Um, just as a reminder to everybody, I did create on our Google Drive back in July, a folder specifically for North Schools Listen. I have not updated it recently. I can resend the link out later if anybody can't find it, um, but in there is all the work that we did over the summer. The very um, long quantitative survey that I drafted, um, the shorter qualitative survey that Dr. Wyatt started to put together for us, the research that I did on this topic, the emails from our attorney that we had on her advice, it is all in that North Schools Listen folder. Um, so maybe um, everybody could take some time, like, looking through that and and thinking about this topic a little bit more. Um, and we can come back to these goals on December second. Um, but if anybody has feedback, um, my learning, thinking, writing style is best if I hear and then put it on here, um, and then we could hopefully be really effective in voting some things, um, if we want to spend some time doing that. Um, I I'm also wondering, now that we're talking, um, maybe a goal that we can have as a school committee, maybe that the North Schools Listen is to own professional development on this topic, because the resolutions that we signed in June um, did say the school committee would have annual professional development on implicit bias and equity and and anti-racism. A lot of the stuff that Dr. Wyatt just shared happens with our staff.
Yeah, Teresa?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, just just a thought, it it might be, first of all, the equity consultant, the thirty thousand dollars is is probably not gonna be available, because that was in the CVRF grant, which has to be spent by December thirtieth, and there's no other grant that can pick up that kind of a cost. But it might be worth investigating a um, an equity consultant and just consult with them uh, or her, whoever it is, um, around the best steps forward here and to to map out a plan. You know, um, that might be my recommendation, and again, Ron Ferguson, I think, would be a a good candidate. There are probably others out there. But he's the one that I've, you know, know of, other districts have used before. And um, you know, that might, I don't know, might cost a thousand dollars of her time, of his time, just to to to, you know, have a conversation and and map out a, you know, a a process for this, because it is a big task. Um, when you're talking about surveying the community, what kind of data do you want to get? Who's gonna analyze the data and all of that, you know? Um, eh, eh, that might be a a logical first step that's doable.
I know you had sent out an email after our meeting on Monday to Dr. Galligan, Dr. Frazek, or Thompson and I. Um, I really need to be a doctor with all of you guys, just so you know. How do I get my PhD amongst everything else I do? Can any of you tell me that? Um, but you had sent out the email about trying to set up some time to look at Ron Ferguson's work and and move this forward. So I think there's an overlap between potentially um, the school committee goal with the larger district goal. Um, so that does need to be done, I think, but what would the school committee want to formulate as like, our goal, our piece in that process?
Well, I mean, you know, I I think, I think it it should be a partnership to me. I mean, that, I've forgotten who it was, Hugh, or somebody said, it's not just a school initiative. This really should be a community-associated initiative that involves the schools and members of the community, which would be you as representatives. Um, so, you know, I think that could be, it could be sort of one and the same goal that we're working together to accomplish this work.
Mm-huh.
You know, I don't, I'm just trying to uh, think off the top of my head here.
Yeah. Um, well, I know this is like a a huge topic, so um, let's just review the other things and then um, obviously, we'll come back to this. Excuse me, at our next meeting. Um, but Dr. Thompson, if you would just scroll down to number eleven, um, is there anything the committee wants to formulate uh, related to the pandemic? Um, or do you want to just strike that completely? Maya?
I I think we should just strike that, because I don't think that, and obviously, we've been doing a lot of work in that area, but I I think that w- we're not really in a good position to formulate a smart goal at this point. Um, but with regard to the, to the North Schools Listens, I think it's a great idea to to make one of our goals be that we do some professional development as a committee. Um, and I I don't know exactly what form that would take. It might be that, you know, we we each attend, um, at, you know, a seminar or webinar or something like that, or maybe we all attend the same one, or some, or we do, we bring a trainer in, but I do think that doing that before um, the end of this election cycle makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so we can think more about, you know, bringing somebody in or a webinar, or, I mean, there's tons of books too, that um, I think we could, you know, decide to read together and and discuss the book. Um, so for now, I'll I'll put a broader like PD, um, and then, you know, I can, I encourage others to help me research what that might look like over the next couple of weeks, and then we can finalize it at our next meeting. Okay, perfect. Um, so let's just briefly review the goal period of April twenty twenty-one to March twenty twenty-two. Um, so again, things that have to be done and already on the long-term agenda or the strategic plan. Um, by analyzing and voting on the middle school grade configuration, that was carried over, because it overlaps both these periods. Um, something that we are writing into the strategic plan for um, objective one is researching and establishing long-term strategic school objective one is researching and establishing long-term strategic school budget planning and sustainable grant management. And this is work that is going to be done by the budget subcommittee and then eventually come to the full school committee. So I put that there. Number three, continuing with the work of North Schools Listen. So just the, the next steps over that next year. Number four, complete the middle school override work. So once we determine the grade configuration of our middle school in June, we then have from July 2021 until town meeting of 2022 to really make the case to the community about why we need this middle school. So there's going to be a lot of work involved there. So that's captured number four. Number five is conducting, completing the MASC policy audit. Depending how the process unfolds with our policy subcommittee, it could be done by the end of 2021 if we're really ambitious. Or it could go into 2022. Number six, we've been talking for a while about wanting to have a retreat. Obviously that didn't happen this past summer, but we could have it as a goal that next summer, we have a retreat to work more on our protocols, do another self-evaluation, talk about meeting efficiencies. Number seven is the participation of the process of analyzing the elementary model and possible reconfiguration of the schools. The timeline may need to be adjusted here, but this is something also going into the strategic plan. And I think as a school committee, we do have a very important role in that. Number eight, the MASC conference, we could take it off if you don't want to formalize it as a goal, but that is something for us to consider. Number nine, develop the FY23 budget. Number 10, something that we've been talking about and pushed off, and that came up in our self-evaluation is that we do need a new member handbook. And Joan and I have been talking about this in our policy subcommittee as well. And we do think that the creation of this makes sense as part of the MASC policy audit. So although it's called out here as a specific product, it's really wrapped up into everything else. And then I put here that it would be done by March 2022. So that election cycle of 2022, when we may have one or two members, since there's two seats up at that time, we would have that member handbook completed. And then we have the superintendent's full evaluation, which in his goals, we did write as between January and March 2022. Number 12 is something that also has been kicked down the road. The law tells us, and as I learned at the MASC conference last year in 2019, that we are supposed to have student engagement and participation on the school committee. This is something that the North School Committee has never done, to my knowledge. But prioritizing everything else that we have to do, and this would be a big decision. I have it currently placed that we would begin this discussion in March of 2022 with the goal that by the fall of 2022, we figure out how we're going to do that. And then 13 is a question for all of you. With everything that we are collaborating with the general government, did you want a specific goal around any of that work? So there you go. Yeah.
Just a question. So I think that, you know, student engagement is awesome, but what does that look like? Are there any school committees that are currently doing that that we should be looking to model based on that?
Yeah, if you look, and I can send the link, the folder that I created in the drive on the MASC conference last year in 2019, all my notes and Maya's notes, because she went to the conference then too. We both put everything in there and there was a whole session that I attended on this topic. And yeah, by law, we're required to have student participation on the school committee. Some school committees have a student representative at every meeting. Some set up like a separate advisory board. I'm not fully up on my notes from a year and a half ago, so I can't tell you everything, but I do remember it cannot be your student council. It has to be its own thing. So some school committees set up like an advisory board, some have it where their school, their student school committee rep just comes like once a month and gives a report. There's different ways to do it. But we're definitely not doing what we're supposed to. And Dr. Thompson, I know this was something you felt pretty strongly about when you first came.
Yeah, yeah. So this, this is actually something I've been asking about since the end of the first year. Because I was surprised that there was not student involvement at the school committee level. And it can be, you know, someone who's, who is elected from the student body and sits on the school committee, not a non-voting member, but they participate in the meetings as a, as a member would, but a non-voting member. I've seen another model where you have representatives who are again elected by the student body, high school kids who come at the beginning of a meeting a month, or every meeting is the case may be, you can determine that. And they report out and, you know, give feedback on different things. The school committee would often ask them to go around and find things out and bring things back to them. And then I've seen another model where, you know, once a month, the, there's a committee of students who come forth and, and do a presentation once a month. So those are kind of the three main models. There's pros and cons to all of them. You know, obviously having a student voice on the committee to, to, you know, participate in discussions and such is, is beneficial, but it's also tough if meetings are going till 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night for kids to get up and get to school the next day. The reporting out i- is kind of interesting. They're, they're not quite, you're not hearing as much if that's all they're doing. You know, and that advisory group is good, but it's only good if you're asking them to give advice. So we do have, and as we've seen in Student Government Day, we have some pretty incredible people in our schools. And I think having their voice and, and their opinion on, on some of these discussions would be informative to the, to the committee. So.
I'd like to propose that we move that. We wouldn't be able to, if we assess and determine student engagement participation in school committee in March, students are going out for summer vacation right after that. So I'd like to actually suggest that we move that into our summer retreat work and figure out what model we want to do then and have that be part of our summer retreat work or no.
I am open to that, but I'm going to be entirely candid that I would not be able then to lead that in any capacity. I would need others on the committee to step up and do that if we're moving that timeline any earlier. My, my plea is more than full as school committee right now. I see Dave every day in meetings and no offense, Dr. Thompson, but is that, the, does the committee want to move that up? And if so, just, so start in the summer? Is, is that what you're saying, Joan?
Yeah, but I might have my dates wrong. This is going to be summer 21. I was thinking we're still in 20. But either way, I do think that that is something that we do not need to figure out and decide right now. And I would like to.
So, so right now this says start in March of 2022.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just felt like we were engaging in conversation around it. And I was like, we're not going to figure this out right now.
No, we don't want to figure it out right now. I just think, when do you all want to figure it out? But Dave?
So this will probably what, take the form of a subcommittee to determine the best round of action that suggests the full committee? Because I mean, I, I don't think we have discussed this in a retreat. It's kind of a decision that's open meeting law, correct?
Yeah, but our retreats are posted and people can come to our retreats.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking Catholic school, you know, retreat, we're all in a room talking about our feelings, you know, so.
Everything that we do is posted. So, you know, the workshops and retreats, if people want it to come, like even all the sessions we do with Dorothy Presser from MASC, they're posted. People are welcome to be there if they
Got it.
Really listen to us, hash out all that fun protocol stuff.
And I thought we were going to go someplace fun together. Oh, well.
No, we're not allowed to. Other feedback or, you know, with my question for number 13, is there something related to the different collaborations and initiatives we have with the town that anybody feels strongly should be a state of goal? Maya?
It's just a small thing. So I don't even think it really rises to the level of a goal on this, but I, I did remember today that we do need to, you know, revisit the MOU for the joint facilities department. But, but that's just something we should do. It's, I don't think it's going to be nearly as much work as setting it up was in the first place.
Yeah, I do have that on the long-term agenda in December. I just wasn't sure if to talk to Dr. Thompson about the agenda, which December meeting it would be at.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, absolutely. All right. So I'll just take number 13 off for now. And I will ask everybody else to spend some time. I know that I just added this to the packets yesterday. I apologize. The middle school building project is a whole lot of work right now and takes priority over some other school committee things on my end. So we can, it's in our packet. If you could think about it a little bit more, if there's any feedback, maybe by next, like a week from now, that way if there's edits, it can go in the packet by Friday, like it's supposed to for the December 2nd meeting. Maya?
So do we want to talk a little bit about the, the school start times initiative? I'm generally supportive of this idea. I, I, you know, as we look at the timeline and consider the other things that would be going on at the same time, you know, having a, like, we'd be looking at a, of, of town meeting vote and potentially an operate, a, a dead exclusion override vote in spring of 22 and you know, possibly changing start times in the fall of 22. It seems like a lot going on all at the same time. But that's just my, my opinion as I look at this.
Yeah. So quick recap for all this work. You know, Ma and I started working on it in 2017. And originally it was supposed to be voted on for the fall of 2019. Then it got pushed back to the fall 2020. Then it got pushed back to the fall 2021. And the committee, the task force was supposed to come to us right when COVID hit. And basically all the task force work is done, like there's so much data analysis and surveying and presentations and so much that really at a task force level where we're ready to go and present. But with everything going on, with the fact that this is very much tied into also like a potential bell schedule at a change at the high school that Dr. Galligan is working on and some other things. I mean, we have to talk tomorrow in the task force, Dr. Thompson, but I believe we were going to talk to the task force about now recommending for fall of 2022. So pushing it back another year, but the school committee had previously expressed, and if everybody feels different, okay, but previously expressed wanting to make the decision like the spring, like basically a year and a half in advance. So we are looking to make the change September 2022. That would mean voting on it this spring. So that's where the timeline is of, is as of now. Dave?
I, right. I, I think we might want to think about making the five to the, I feel like the, the grade configuration might drive some of this conversation as well in terms of busing and, and all that kind of stuff. I don't know what the implications would be of changing the, the middle school model.
We talked about that a little bit in the task force before. Anything, because part of what's being looked at is the middle school shifting a lot later. Again, I have not looked at all this stuff in a while, but from 7:20 till about 8:40. So one of the discussions there about the fifth grade and the middle school is that a lot of the circadian rhythm delay happens in fifth grade. So that you all know, I'm hesitant about the five through eight. Not fully, fully there yet, but one of the benefits of a five through eight is that if we're talking about this, it does put all of those adolescent kids on the same schedule for school. The buses, we talked about a little bit yesterday in our medium accomplice for the middle school, because obviously fifth grade goes to the middle school. That does change our bus run and, and how many buses we need. So I think that part is true, no matter what time you start the middle school. But the other thing too, I mean, the middle school, we wouldn't be looking to have up until 2025, right, Dr. Thompson?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The middle school would not be built until 2025.
Yeah.
So if we did this, this would happen a number of years before any grade changes.
That's true. Yeah.
A lot to juggle. I know. It's a lot, it's a lot to figure out. Personally, I put a lot of work into the school start time task force over the last three and a half years. And slightly frustrating on a personal level to see it continue to be moved, but it's been moved for the right reasons, the override and then the pandemic. But I believe from what I've heard from task force members so far is that they're still very supportive of it happening. No, nobody that I've heard from says we should not proceed with the work, but we'll find out more tomorrow in that meeting. And I can, we can, Dr. Thompson, you can send out an update after tomorrow and inform the committee of how the task force goes. That way everybody knows what the topic, you know, the decisions are of the task force tomorrow. And then that could impact where this goes on our goal document. Does that feel fair? Yeah, okay. Anything else on this topic tonight? Okay. So moving along, policy will not take a very long time. Hopefully we can get through this pretty quickly. But the first thing is we do have that gender identity support policy that we had our first vote on last meeting. Everybody heard in public forum on the letter from Ms. Wu regarding this policy, but other than that email, I do not believe we had any comment from the public. Right, Dr. Thompson?
Not that I'm aware of, Madam Chair.
Okay. So is the committee comfortable with our second and final vote on the gender identity support policy tonight?
Yes.
Their motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Joan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. Next, under policy is the MASC policy contract, which we have voted on before as committee, but I did not want to sign it until we just shared the updated fee schedule because it's been a while since we voted on it until we got this final copy. So when payment is due has slightly shifted. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with this. So the first $3,500 would be due as soon as I sign it, which could be tomorrow, if you all tell me to go sign it. The second installment of 3,500 would be due by July 1st of 2021. And then the final installment, 3,500 would be due upon completion or July 1st, 2022. We are currently aiming to have it done before 2022. But that would be the pay structure. Dr. Thompson and Sheridan are aware of the pay schedule. They're fine with it, but I just wanted to confirm the committee is before I sign this contract. Dave, motion to approve. Thank you, Maya.
I, I will second that with just a comment that like, this is money well spent because updated policies will ultimately save us money and legal fees, et cetera, and other complications we could have. So this is really long overdue. So I second that.
Thank you. Yeah. Any further discussion?
I would like to make a friendly amendment that you sign it as soon as possible. Maya, were you open to that amendment?
I will go tomorrow. Although Dr. Thompson will talk, I seem to have a hard time getting into the Savage Center, even though it's only five minutes away, but I will go because there's other things I need to sign to.
Actually just trying to avoid me. That's what it really.
No. But we already do have a January meeting set up with MASC as a policy subcommittee because they need a couple months, few months to review everything. And I I believe Priscilla already sent them all her material, right, Dave?
They have all of our stuff, yes.
Yeah.
To send them the contract, signed contract.
All right. So on the motion that I can go sign this, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Okay, I will do so and I can't wait to get this started. So last quick policy item is two things in the folder. So the MASC was not able to have their full conference this early November because of the pandemic, but they did still hold an online virtual meeting. I was not able to attend the virtual meeting, but I do have the documents from it that I shared. Because every year at the conference, they vote on a set of resolutions and that is basically the MASC choosing issues that they're going to advocate for and focus on in the next year. And if you pull up the resolution document that I linked to in our agenda, there's 10 of them that they voted on. Two of them, we have already adopted as our own in Norwood, the COVID funding one, and then the anti racism education. But there's a resolution on here around MCAS and high stakes testing that Joan brought to the policy subcommittee and wanted to talk more about tonight with all of you. So Joan?
Sure. It's the, it's resolution one in the document that's linked in our packet. And essentially it is, there are two main pieces of the resolution. Essentially saying that COVID-19 hit in the spring of last year, that there were 10th graders last year who missed their 10th grade MCAS. And this resolution is calling for them to be held harmless for that, that their graduation requirements are determined by locally controlled voices of the school committee and the school administration, basically saying that it's not their fault that they missed the MCAS and they don't need to make it up. So that's the first piece. And the second piece of this resolution is renewing a call for moratorium on all high stakes testing for this academic year in light of COVID-19. So I'd like to make a motion that we that we approve this resolution.
So you would like us to do similar to what we do at the other two, like format it that as a Norwood school resolution?
Exactly, substitute the Norwood School Committee for the MCAS and.
Yeah, is there a second on that motion?
Happy to second that.
Thank you, Dave, is there a discussion? Maya?
The the MASC resolution ends with asking the state legislature for a three year moratorium on high stakes testing. And um I I honestly find that to be a little bit excessive, and I'm I'm curious. Um what the committee thinks of that.
That's a great question, um committee or Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyeth, I mean, what is what are your perspectives at this time as well that we should consider?
Well, obviously, this year is going to be difficult, just based on. How are we going to get groups of kids in to even do the testing?
Absolutely, this year.
You know, and then there's, I mean. You know, the I I don't think the problem is really the testing, I think the problem is the accountability piece. Um so if kids have had their their education disrupted for a third of the year last year. Marginally, you know, somewhat impacted this year, it's still not regular school, and some kids are still struggling with that, are those. Measures we should use to deal with accountability, um you know, and I've never been. A huge, you know, schoolwide or individual. You know, practitioner accountability measuring, but I do think that it does tell us. How we're doing, and it tells our students and our families how they're doing against the standards, which is really what. Um it should be, it should not be, you know, a stick as as opposed to a carrot. So I think the rationale, and it was not in the conversation, but the rationale is that three years would give it enough to come back to. A normal level. Um if they're going to use it as accountability, but. I mean, I I I would hate to go three years without any sort of measurement whatsoever. I have no problem with having a measurement and saying we're not going to start grading schools and and teachers and such for things that they could not. Control, uh there's a whole lot of things that already go into that that we cannot control. You can easily argue that if we could solve the poverty problem uh in this country and the equity issue in this country, we would solve the accountability. Problem in this country, but. Topic for another day. Sorry, I had my social justice warrior hat on.
Yeah, no, I I would agree with that, yeah. I I think I think it's the accountability piece that's the problem, but uh to to not do any sort of assessment against the framework and. What we expect kids is a mistake for that long a period.
So I would say we make it so that we're putting this in for a one year, you know, moratorium on testing. Uh to be revisited in a year, I mean, because I think when this is written, we didn't have the potential of a vaccine coming out. You know, in the spring, you know, so there was like three years as. Reasonable expectation for things to get back to normal, but we could be back to normal within a year. So it's somewhere between one and two years is probably a good timeline, I I think that accountability is important, but I also don't want to penalize people. For being in the situation not caused by them either, so I would want to amend this resolution to one to two years.
Emery?
So are we talking about, let me just clarify for myself, we're talking about proposing a resolution for the school committee, correct, or a policy?
A a resolution, this would just, so we we.
Okay.
We just recently started adopting resolutions, but we as a school committee have been talking about trying to um. Be more active in advocacy, um the MASC has always adopted resolutions, but to my knowledge, up until the two that we just did over the summer, we never. Signed resolutions before, but I could be wrong, um so this would just be something that, you know, we vote on, um sign our names to. Send to the appropriate people making the decisions, um just help advocate. What'd you say?
It's a version of legislative advocacy.
Yeah, okay, that was my question, I mean, I was just trying to basically, uh uh you know, gauge what what authority we even have in that regard, because we can make a resolution, but. Ultimately, if the state says you're having your test, I mean, we we can't say no, and then my my concern around it is, I obviously, I advocate for this, please do not. Get me wrong, I think they should be canceled this year and potentially next year, just given that the amount of um learning that we've missed going towards these tests. I mean, as we all know, teachers have like completely changed the way they teach uh before covid to teach to the test, to make sure that the kid, you know, kids could pass this. Um you know, and and that clearly can't happen right now the way things are, however, you know, what other implications are there? Um are there anything further than state, are we looking at federal issues if we don't, you know? If we don't provide these tests, or if we don't, I just, I guess I'm concerned about that this might be higher even than that.
So let me address the, um sorry, if I can hop in and address that. How I was reading, how I was reading and understanding this resolution because it's tied together. Um is when they were talking about the tenth graders would be held harmless, it was specifically around graduation requirements, so it's not to say this test couldn't happen. It means that if you do not pass the test as it currently stands, that you would be held harmless for graduating. And so I then interpreted, I then followed that logic through to the rest of it, which is that you can test all you want. But is that going to be impacting anybody for the next three years? Um and that was my understanding of the resolution that I was proposing. So it's it's more in line with Dr. Thompson's accountability piece versus giving the test.
Okay, that's that clarifies it for me, I mean, in that case, then yeah, that's that's. I I I completely agree that, you know, they should be held harmless because this is not their fault, and a gra- as a graduation crime, it should just be out the window. In my opinion, but.
Yeah, Maya?
I have a really different take on it, I think that um I do understand that the fact that the tests were canceled last year is nobody's fault, right? Like, and I'm not arguing about that or anything like that, but I do think that. I I think that I'm worried that as a state, we have lost some students that. And that um that we aren't giving them the education they're they deserve right now. And I'm not necessarily talking about Norwood, I'm talking about larger at the statewide level, and and I'm not comfortable with saying like. Oh, that's okay, we'll just leave it up to districts to decide whether or not their kids have gotten enough, I think like it's important to test and find out. Like, I don't think the kids deserve diplomas, I think the kids deserve an education, and we really need to do everything we can to try to. Bring them the best, you know, to make up for what was missed in the last few years, you know, the last year and then what's going on this year. And so, uh I know that uh standardized tests are not necessarily the best tool for this, I know that um. The uh it that, and I'm not opposed to like some of the alternatives for like portfolios and stuff like that, not like a huge. MCAS proponent, but I just feel like. Eh especially right now, um to say like, oh, we're just going to tell everybody, it's okay that you missed a whole year of school, and you don't even really. Need to worry too much about making up all that that basic information, we're just going to send you through, is kind of what I worry the message. Comes out to be, if we're like, oh yeah, we're just making it, you know, everybody's hel- held harmless for three years, so that's my concern about it.
Yeah.
I think the problem is, I'm sorry, I can't write, I should be raising my hand, I think the problem is, is that the person who the the indiv- the the. Responsible party in this, the way it's currently structured is the individual student when it should be the system, like I agree with you, we should, and and and. There's, I'm reading this as a way to to hold the students less harmless, number one, and because right now. What happens to the school system if fifty percent of their kids fail the MCAS, right, like there's some punitive things that happen, but what happens to those students, right? They don't get their high school diploma, which basically ruins their lives, um it doesn't ruin their lives, but it makes their lives a whole hell of a lot more complicated. I think the other thing that happens is um that this is disproportionately impacting um a population of students. That has either disabilities, um five oh fours or otherwise receives accommodations, and those are students who are perhaps marginally. Um who who struggle with the MCAS anyway, it's documented that that's that's a struggle for these students anyway, so we are setting up our most vulnerable students to be the ones. Most penalized by covid, um and I think the ripple effects of this is going to actually last longer than three years. Um but three years does seem like a good indication, so um you know, for the purposes of this resolution, I would say that we could. Um agree for the moratorium for one year, and then I think I could come back to the drawing board with something that. Um it sounds like we all recognize that there's some unfairness going on, but it's nobody wants to let, you know, just basically say. Yep, sucks to be you, we want to make sure the learning, that the learning happens and figure out the right way to write a resolution to hold the right.
People.
To put the responsibility in the right place, so I will amend, I'll amend the resolution to um say that I uh I'll I'll amend my motion to say. That um I'd like to pass this um substituting Norwood School Committee for where it says mass and mass board of directors. As well as changing the moratorium on high stakes testing from three years to one year.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so we have a policy subcommittee meeting tomorrow, so um I mean, it doesn't sound like a whole lot of wordsmithing, but we can make sure we do that, and then just get it. Back to everybody to make sure you're okay with those changes. Uh Dr. Thompson, has MASC put anything out on this? I mean, MASC has been pretty vocal on this for a while.
Shh, we talked about it, um just in the roundtable today. There was um and and it mainly was, the conversation was about this year, um the difficulty. We were going to have testing in January. And you know, if the if one class came in, if the juniors came in or the sophomores came in to test. Uh would you be able to bring the other students in for the day? And there was a lot of agreement that that would be um. You know, a problem, so uh yeah, so that but that that was the um. That was the conversation around that, it was not about voting this, it was bringing up other issues around the um. Around the. The issue, it was, yeah, sorry. I'm getting a little tired, sorry.
Yeah, we're we're almost done. Um the one other thing I just wanted to call your attention to in these resolutions, not for us to vote on, but just for your awareness, um is the eighth resolution, which. Um I think is really interesting, and I'm glad MASC is pursuing this, which is that um the board of Dusty. Um includes a school committee member on that board, um because it currently doesn't, and the law would have to be changed for that to happen, but as we have all seen. Throughout this pandemic, the communication and collaboration from Dusty to school committees has been um horrible, um so. Not that we as the Norwood School Committee are going to be able to change that, but I just personally. Um I'm all in favor for MASC pursuing that resolution, and just wanted to call your attention that they are trying to do so. Okay, so as I mentioned, we have a policy subcommittee meeting tomorrow, um where we will be working on all the other policies that we have talked to you about before, and we'll. Share an update at our next meeting. Um I don't see any new business tonight, um and Dr. Thompson, there are a few donations.
Yes, there are three donations, uh the first um is from Ohio Pile Prints Incorporated. Uh to the high school for uh eighty two dollars and seventy four cents, excuse me, the next one is um. From um Bay State Textiles, and I won't go through each school, but for a grand total of five hundred ninety four dollars to the district. And uh the last one is from um Saint Tim's uh Thanksgiving Outreach, uh they have um and. Collected um gift cards for families needing assistance at Thanksgiving, uh and uh basically. There's a total of, ew, gosh. Lots of families, twenty, thirty, thirty five.
There's ninety four, it says about the end.
Thank you, uh ninety four uh families getting, oh, there it is, thank you, uh twenty dollar gift cards. Uh the other thing I I would mention with this is something that uh Saint Tim's normally does, but because of covid was not able to do. What was uh food boxes, um and what has happened is that our our teaching staff and our staffs at our schools have created. Boxes uh and and done that work um that Saint Saint Tim's could not because of the covid situation, so I want to. Recognize our staff for reaching out to our needy families as well.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, is there a motion to approve these three donations?
So moved.
Thanks, Dave, is there a second? Thanks, Emery, all in favor? Okay, great, five zero, um so at this time, school committee addenda, uh Joan, did you have anything this evening?
Um the only addenda I would like to uh state is, I would like to state, um or I would like to thank. The building and facilities crew um for the work that they have done in the seamless transition, um it, we had no doubt that. Um that joint facilities being headed by Paul and Chris would bring great things to the town. Um but it's also impressive to continue to hear that we have twenty four hour work uh worker to turn around, so I just want to say thank you. To them and to that whole crew, um I also want to say that I just would like to remind the community uh that while we are meeting. Um remotely, um we students have had a choice as to whether or not they wanted to engage in the RLA Academy from the beginning. Um and that students can make a choice with no questions asked, no documentation proved, but simply what their comfort level was, whether or not they chose to remain remote. Um or whether or not they chose to engage in hybrid, um and that we are continuing to follow best practice and continuing to work with the Board of Health. Around what is best practice, and that is to be virtual when you can be virtual, um and so I just want to put out there that. You know, that the RLA Academy is something um that I am extremely proud of, um as something that the administration pulled together. That the town pulled together to allow for any student who wanted to go remote full time to go remote full time. Um and it seems to be doing incredibly well, so I just wanted to say that I'm I'm really proud of that effort and the way the community came together to make it be. A full instruction model for any student who wanted to go remote instead of simply a bunch of videos and some worksheets that they did, so. Just wanted to put that up there.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Maya, did you have anything this evening?
Just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and um we'll see you in December.
That sounds kind of scary. Uh Dave, Tanya?
Sure thing. So uh as this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, I would like to extend my profound thanks to my colleagues on the school committee, as well as Morris Smith. Who was on this committee earlier this year, I am thankful for the work of the school committee, as well as the administration, our exceptional information technology department. Our food service staff and management, our custodial staff, all our teachers, par professionals, specialists, principals, vice principals, secretaries. I'm likely forgetting someone, but I'm truly, truly thankful for everyone. Education is important, math is important, science is important, why is it important? Well, the incredible news this week is that not one, but two covid vaccines in phase three clinical trials. Seem to be ninety five percent effective in preventing this deadly disease, a very real world example of the power of science and engineering. If you weren't already aware, one of the vaccines was developed by Moderna, a biotechnology company with key facilities right here in Norwood. Last year, thanks to tax incentives approved at town meeting by your representatives, myself included, Moderna expanded their Norwood offices, labs and manufacturing facilities. We should all be extremely proud of this small but important supporting role Norwood has played in this great achievement. A vaccine for the world may soon be manufactured right here in Norwood. Even more incredible is that these vaccines were developed in a fraction of the usual time it takes to develop a vaccine. The polio vaccine took about seventeen years, the rubella vaccine took about seven years, and more recently, the HPV vaccine that prevents some common cancers. Took twenty three years to be developed, on average, according to Wikipedia, it takes between ten to fifteen years to develop a working vaccine. Now, in less than a year, we have two vaccines that could soon eradicate the worst and deadliest outbreak the world has seen in over a century. This is no miracle, it is a result of decades and decades of investment in science and education. Education started in the classrooms and science labs, just like the ones we have here in Norwood, so there is a light at the end of the tunnel. Everyone has suffered in some ways during this pandemic, some economically, most of it socially and inconveniently. And for two hundred fifty thousand of our fellow Americans and their families, quite tragically. Next week, as you consider celebrating Thanksgiving and the upcoming holiday season, as you yearn for the large family meal that looks like a nostalgic Norman Rockwell painting. Please don't do it, we are so close to the finish line, getting out of this terrible mess, but we are all still in grave danger. So let's all forego getting together this holiday season to prevent the spread of covid, let's all fa- sacrifice a little bit of nostalgia this year. Let's all sacrifice a little bit of nostalgia this year so that everyone can celebrate the holidays, not just this season, but for many more years to come.
Thank you, Dave. Anne Marie, did you have anything this evening?
I can't follow that up, so. Just to say happy Thanksgiving and everyone be safe.
Thank you. Uh, just real briefly, I wanted to remind the community of a lot of mental health resources that, um, are on the Impact Norwood website. I've seen in a couple Facebook groups recently, um, parents sharing how hard these times are for them and their children. Um, so if you go to Impact Norwood to the resource page, there's a bunch of podcasts and webinars that were done over the summer and that are still being done. Um, there's also a toolkit that Aubrey Seal and I wrote in the spring, um, that we really want people to utilize, so please take advantage of it. And then also just a reminder that Norwood, the schools and the town collectively do pay for our residents to have access to interface at Williams James College, so you can call them. And they help match you to a provider. They figure out who takes your insurance, who specializes in what you need, um, and the availability. So, um, as I think we have all touched upon in a number of ways, right now is really hard. It's getting harder, not easier. Um, and it's just really important to take care of our mental health as well as our physical health. So don't forget about those resources. Well, at this time, oh, Dr. Thompson, did you want to say something? No, okay. So I do unfortunately have to ask the committee to go back into executive session briefly because we did not finish our conversation before this business meeting. So we will go into executive session, we will return to open session just for the point of adjournment. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Dave, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Anne Marie. I do have to poll everybody individually, so Anne Marie?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Dave, Tanya?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So to the community, stay safe, happy Thanksgiving. We will be back December second, but to everybody else, I will see you momentarily in executive session.